Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, February 27. If you have a cellphone with you, now's a good time to turn it down or turn it off. That's what I'm doing myself. If you have an item on the agenda about which you wish to address us, you'll find a form like this on the table in the hallway, the entry hall. You might also find a cushion there if you're really lucky. And if you'll fill that out for us, just name and address and which item you want to speak to, that's helpful for us and for our processes and paperwork. For those of you who don't come down here on a regular basis, the way this works is we have a little bit of sort of housekeeping to take care of at the front end, and then we'll get to a place in the agenda where we're going to call each separate item for discussion and vote. We'll have the applicant come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they're asking us for. We may or may not have questions of them and may want to discuss that amongst ourselves. If there are people here who wish to address that either in support or opposition, we'll ask them also to come forward and give us their name and address and tell us what it is they want us to know. First item on the agenda is receipt of a minute.
Motion to receive minutes.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the February 13 Planning Commission meeting. Would you cast your votes, please? Those are received. We have a few items that have been requested for continuance.
We have several uncontested requests. 19, which is PUD 1759, deferred to March 12. Item 20 deferred to March 12 as well. Item 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 also deferred to March 12. Item 27 deferred to March 26. Item 28 deferred to April 9. Item 29 has been withdrawn and item 30 has been withdrawn.
Is there anybody here who thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve continuances is read.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the continuances as read. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued or withdrawn as read.
We have two new requests for continuance. The first is item 2, PC 10646, deferred to April 9. And then the second is item 18, which is CPA, deferred to April 9, 2020.
Is there anyone present who thought they wanted to be heard on either of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
On item 2, it's on the consent docket, right?
It is.
Would you approve that? Does it matter?
No. Was that a motion?
Motion. First. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue items number 2 and 18. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued. We have a few items. Do I have anybody else who wants just to request a continuance? No. Yes? No? Okay. We have a few items that are relatively routine in nature for which we're not aware of any protest, and we vote on those as a block under what we call our consent docket. Would you read those for us?
Item 1 is an application to rezone 10224 North Bryant Avenue from R1 to AA. Item 2 is being continued. Item 3 is a final plat of magnolia duplexes, and that is located south of Northwest Expressway and west of North Serra Road. Item 4 is an application to close right-of-way east of South Walker Avenue between West I-240 Service Road and southwest 79th Street.
Is there anybody here today that thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Very quickly, on item 4, I'm guessing the protest or the opposition's removed just because they maintain the right-of-way access to the, from the south to the cell tower side. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. No, in that case.
Because there was an opposition letter. Staff was even recommending denial, and now it's on consent. I just want to be sure of it.
Yeah, the applicant just removed that section that dealt with the access to the towers and nothing will change.
So they can still get there, and it's, okay. Just making sure.
Where am I? Do I have a motion, a second?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve items 1, 3, and 4. Cast your votes, please. Those items have been approved.
Item 5 is an application to rezone 1619 Northwest 19th Street from R1 to SPUD 1199.
Is our applicant present?
Fallon Brooks, 1605 North Classen.
Tell us what you're asking for, please.
We're just taking a single-family home, turning it into a single-family home with a garage apartment behind it. And we're changing the setbacks a little bit to reflect what's going on with the development next door, also so that we can fit a little bit larger residents on the lot to have more room for turnaround behind the house.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this matter. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
Architectural regulations, the cement siding, is that essentially the aesthetic that's present in the rest of the neighborhood? Is that why you're requesting that specifically?
It was more of a maintenance thing, and I think it's also what was in the original template that we were given, and so we just kind of left it. But we're open to whatever is suggested.
Well, I just was jumping ahead. I mean, you've got three items on the agenda, but so each of these, I'm going to ask the same question. One of them, it looks like a lot of the surrounding houses were brick. I just looked at one because I could happen to be driving right by it. But the others, I didn't. So I'm just curious if you're maintaining kind of that aesthetic or if you're altering that aesthetic.
Yeah, this one in this neighborhood, they're mostly wood siding with a little bit like brick accent here and there.
Yeah, so instead of using wood siding, you're using cement board?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If there's no further comment, I will move to make a recommendation of approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 5. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 6 is an application to rezone 19303, excuse me, North May Avenue from PUD 1604 to SPUD 1196.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a bit of an unusual situation in that when my client went to start site planning this particular tract, we realized there was an extra 80-foot swath that was zoned R1-ZL that didn't fit within the R1-ZL. And so what we're simply trying to do with this application is to bring that 80-foot strip under the same regulations that exist under the PUD 1604. So we have mirrored those things within 1604. There are three technical evaluations, all of which we agree to.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants?
The only thing I have is from staff's comment, which I think is not a terrible idea, which is, says, "Plant performance could be strengthened if the SPD required a method for pedestrian and vehicular connectivity to the residential to the north and/or west, and if the overall site plan divided parking lots more," blah, 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 blah. "This could be reviewed with a specific plan for 1604." Any objection to us maintaining the ability to review the pedestrian plan for 1604 at specific plan stage?
Well...
Because I just think that'd be a good idea.
I can't do anything in the confines of this application to amend...
The other one.
The other one.
But I'm saying the other one wasn't that way.
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't recall. I do believe, based upon the number, that we would likely have to have a specific plan application, just because 1604 isn't too old. But I can't, I mean, I can't agree to do anything within 1604 on this 80-foot strip. Now, however, any development's going to be required to come in because we can't independently develop the 80-foot strip.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just, I asked the question the wrong way. This comment that was in the staff report about having, was that a part of the other PUD? Was it incorporated? Do you know?
I apologize because I went to the technical evaluations on this one because it was an 80-foot strip, and I did not dig into all of the details that staff put in here, although I'm sure they are very calculated and very, let's see, I don't know, to answer your question. I don't know how to strengthen plant performance on an 80-foot strip.
Okay. Well, I'm with you that it's an 80-foot strip, so I just was curious. I'm fine with it.
In any event, we will have site plan approval on this strip, won't we?
No. SPUDs do not have specific plan approval provisions.
I'm sorry, site plan approval.
And staff has asked us to take that out, is my belief, which we have agreed to. The deal is, you cannot develop this 80-foot strip independently of another portion of 1604.
That's why I was asking if that comment was incorporated in the PUD and if it was required as a part of that, because here, you're essentially tacking this on, and the staff report made that comment, so I was curious if we had maintained that ability to review specifically their pedestrian and vehicular connections when they come in because this would be the only thing on that corner at this point. There's nothing else around it. So, but he doesn't know.
Just to be clear, there is a statement in the master design statement, I assume, that site plan approval shall not be required. There's a technical evaluation that says you're going to remove that statement.
We're going to remove it. And so independently, there is not a site plan review, right? You will see the 80-foot strip as a piece of a larger development through a specific plan application at some point.
Ah, there we go. That's where I was trying to get. Okay. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPUD 1196.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 6. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 7 is an application to rezone 4511 North McKinley Avenue from R1 to SPUD 1197.
Me again. Fallon Brooks, 1605 North Classen Boulevard.
Will you pull the microphone a little closer to you, please?
Sure.
Tell us what you're asking for.
Okay, so we have here, it's an old grocery store, neighborhood bodega, that has been empty for 20, 30 years. It's just a little, like rectangular, brick building that sits kind of on the edge of an alley between two houses, and we want to turn it into a single-family residence. It's got a lot of unique challenges. It's currently what's considered a non-compliance structure because it does not meet current setback requirements for the base zoning district that it's in. So we are doing the SPUD to change the setbacks, and we'll also be doing a revocable permit because it's sitting slightly over the property line, and we're going to have to do some utility relocation and some other things, but we're going to add a second floor and really try to bring this thing back to life, so.
So it's zoned R1, you're developing it R1. The reason you're doing this is basically to do with your setbacks and the things that make this conversion of a property like this into a true residential use problematic.
Yeah.
And there are these little things all over Ward 2, and I'm sure all over Ward 7 and Ward 6, and I love seeing people do things with them. So I have looked at this, I've looked at the plans. I like it, but of course I can't make a motion. Let me ask, is there anybody present who wants to be heard on this item today? Commissioners, do you have any questions of our applicant?
Nothing really pertinent, but I like the development. Do you know what it was, like, the last time it was used?
Yeah, it was called Leaf Green Grocery, and it closed in the 90s when Mr. Leaf Green passed away.
Right, so it's been abandoned since the 90s?
The 90s, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is the, this, it says on the site plan, there's a 10-foot platted alley utilities. Has that alley been vacated, closed?
It's not. It's not vacated, and there's currently sewer line running in there.
Yeah.
And so that's why we have some challenges with the revocable that we're going to have to work out.
So they're not building over it?
We're not building it. The only thing that we had proposed building over it was maybe like a stoop for the entry to get in and out the door, and possibly like a fence panel to go over that to fence off a small yard area, but we can, we have options on the other side to move our entry over there. So we do have some play with that a little bit. But currently, that stoop, if you're looking at that image right there, that stoop is sitting into the current alley. Now, the sewer line is probably between where the stoop is and the edge of the driveway.
Jeff or JJ, I just remember a case over near Plaza where they put some, basically some townhome type, for lack of a better term, and there was an alley next to it that they wanted to use brick pavers on. The city made them use concrete. We had this big discussion about the fact that the city always wants concrete in its alleys for maintenance and repair.
If they're paving them for use.
If they're paving them for use.
Yeah, we're not paving this.
So that's the difference here.
Yes, yeah.
It's not being, okay.
This would be used as a small courtyard, kind of.
Like side yard, kind of, yeah.
I get it. I just want, I was just curious with that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, the city was not crazy about the idea of returning to the nostalgic old brick pavers for the alleyway. It was, they wanted actual concrete to drive on, so. But that's not an issue here, so.
I think this is a great use, and if no more discussion, I'd happily make a motion to approve.
I apologize. Did you agree to the TE? Did we talk about that?
To the what?
To the technical evaluation, because there's one technical evaluation.
Remind me what it was.
Only paving pavers will be allowed within the alley with the approval of a revocable permit.
Yes.
No additional structures, curbing, brick walls, stairs, or fences...
Oh, stairs. I didn't know that.
...will be allowed within the alley. Paving pavers taller than six inches that requires footing will not be permitted, because obviously on the image you show...
There's some stairs, yeah.
There's things happening within that area.
Yeah, so no then. So really, the only thing that we want to do in the alley is stairs. I mean, we need to be able to access the doors. There's two doors. There's one right there at the front, and then there's one kind of toward the back that would go into the side yard. And we're going to need, I don't think that it's one inch.
Let me ask, staff, can't we just leave this to the revocable permit process?
We recognize that there's two sets of stairs that are already over the alley, and those are fine.
Okay.
We don't want anything more.
Additional, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
No additional structures, curbing, brick walls, stairs.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and no additional structures includes, again, on this list, curbing, brick walls, or fences.
Fencing. Now, that's, I did have a question about that, so what do we do about the fencing? We can't run a fence across the front of it, even if it's, sorry.
I don't think you can do that without closing the alley, can you? You can't...
You can apply for revocable to do that, but I know utilities is going to object to that. Anything more than what's just flat on the ground will be objected.
Okay. So we can make that a part of our revocable?
Yeah, but...
I mean, they'll fight it, but...
Yes.
I think he's saying it's unlikely, is my read of it.
Okay.
What about, it doesn't say landscape.
Sorry, what was that?
It doesn't say landscape.
It doesn't say landscape.
So solid hedge, something like that.
I don't know. I'm just, you know...
Now, I appreciate you catching it, so I don't know...
I would be thoughtful about that one.
So what would be the recommendation in terms of what I should do now? I mean, should we, should we hold off on this until we can get that sorted out, or...
I guess it's your...
Should we work it out in the revocable?
Is your owner here?
No.
No, okay. As I say, if you could work it out and come back during this meeting, we might be able to get you, but it sounds like maybe not. I don't know.
Is it a deal breaker?
Is what, putting a fence up? I mean, I would think so. I would think that if we're going to try and sell this, then someone's going to want to be able to use that as a yard, and then ultimately, they're probably going to just do what they want and put a fence up anyway. I mean, not my owner, but whoever buys the property, so.
I would be comfortable leaving this to the revocable permit process. The likelihood of you getting approval for fencing seems low, but...
Okay. Let me, let me go call my client, and we'll, maybe we can hold off on this for a minute and see, can we do that?
We're going to pass it to the end of the docket.
Yeah, let's pass it to the end of the docket. Let me go talk to him and see what he wants to do.
Okay, sounds good to me.
All right.
Let's just do that.
I would look at the language when you talk to him.
Yes.
Of that TE.
Thank you.
Have you got a copy of the staff report?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I need to rescind?
Um, let's do. Let's do. We'll rescind our motion.
I will rescind my motion to approve.
Take a step back. So we'll, let's pass this then to the end of the docket, and your punishment will be that you have to sit until the end of the docket to get an answer to your question. Don't go too far, though, because you have another item on the agenda. Item number eight.
Item eight is an application to rezone 10124 Southeast 29th Street from R1 to C3.
Hi, my name is Melba Forni. We're just trying to rezone it because it's not a house there anymore, and everything around it's zoned, and just to zone it to C3 for whatever falls under that category to use it for.
I have a question for staff. JJ has stepped out. I was a little unclear from my reading of the staff report whether a variance is required. There's an indication that they will not be able to meet the driveway separation requirement, and I would have thought that required a variance, but I'm curious. Is there somebody who can come answer that question for me?
For a new driveway or for the existing?
Well, I don't think we can require it for the existing driveway.
Well, I think that's the point, is that if the new one, it doesn't require that because there's already one in existence, but it doesn't meet the 200-foot separation That's the way I read it.
But it says code will require the approach and drive to be paved.
Paved, but not moved.
There's actually two driveways, because there used to be a house there, and there was one driveway coming into the house, and then on the other side of the property, that's another drive, because at one time, there was a shop building in the back that it went down to. They're not paved, no, they're gravel, but there's actually two driveways there right now.
So I'm just not clear about what's required, JJ. My question was about the driveways. We have an indication in staff report that they can't meet the separation, but there's no requirement indicated for a variance. Apparently, there's an existing curb cut, but it's not paved. So what's the status then? If they use the existing and have to pave it, then what, how does that work?
When she redevelops the property, she'll have to put in a city standard approach, paved approach, and we can't deny her access based on the fact it doesn't meet driveway separation. We have to give a property access.
Even if it has another access point?
Originally, the property, there was a house kind of in the middle, and there was one driveway going up to the house, and then on the other side, on this side, there's another driveway. We do plan on paving, concrete, asphalt, whatever we have to do. We know that, to do that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you've got what you need.
Okay.
Does she need a variance, I guess is my question.
No.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant? I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I guess if there's no other comments, I will make a motion...
I'm sorry. I don't even pay attention. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number eight. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item nine is an application to rezone 3601 South Bryant Avenue from R1 to I-2.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, again here on behalf of the applicant who is also here with me. This is an application for an I-2 district to allow a development of a curve that would allow for a contracting company that often serves, say, ONG, OG&E, things like that, and they have large equipment. The reason they are buying this site is because they need a place to store outside their large equipment. If you look at the aerial, Ms. Lincoln, if you put that up, and I'm not sure if anybody had the opportunity to drive this site, but it is on the Oklahoma City side, even things that say residential, I would argue, are fairly industrialized. You have metal buildings to our south, on the back half of the property to the south, although it's zoned AA and appears to be used as residential. My understanding from my client is that they have good relationship with that person. That person is also utilizing his property as outdoor storage of old cars, perhaps RVs and tractor trailers. To the north of us is that R1 piece that is undeveloped. To the north of that, you have what is now an abandoned mobile home park, SPUD 351. I'm not sure what that is permitting. However, I counted at least 37 abandoned vehicles, boats, RVs, and tractor trailers. North of that is I-2. So I must trenchantly disagree with staff's position that we should amend to I-1. I think I-2 is appropriate, given the nature of the uses surrounding, and we would ask
I have some concerns about I-2 directly across the street from residential property, albeit in Del City. Is there any way that you can split the development so that there's I-1 on the front, I-2 on the back? And I realize that it's difficult to make a cogent argument that I-2 is not especially appropriate around an electrical substation, but that frontage along Bryant is a little bit different, I think.
Sure. I mean, I have some concern agreeing to that. I think we probably can accept, I've got some concern as to where this magic line gets drawn on the property and how, frankly, from an enforcement standpoint, we're going to know that, okay, we've now crossed the magic line, and therefore, this piece of whatever is crossed it, and therefore, it's not appropriate, and subject my client to, you know, being cited for violating the ordinance.
Oh, I think we can sort that out.
I mean, the same way we do it every time we do a PUD?
Right, but it's not a PUD.
I understand.
This is straight zoning, and so, I mean, I guess we're going to have to go find new legal descriptions, and that's going to be noted separately. Like, this isn't a PUD where we could break it into tracks.
So we just say the eastern 300 feet of the property. I mean, it's not really hard.
I mean, I'm happy to work with staff. I'm happy to come up with a spot on the frontage. I don't want to commit to 300 feet because I don't think they're far enough...
Would you like to do it between now and the time we vote on this?
I'd like to do it between now and the time it goes to City Council, because whatever staff says, we're fine to do as long as we can lay out a site plan. We haven't got that far along in the process, and until we can lay out a site plan to know exactly where that line of demarcation is going to be for the outdoor storage, I don't want to commit to something that I'm going to have to come back again. So agreeing to, I guess what staff's concerns are, we're happy to work with them and set that line before City Council.
But in the meantime, would you like for us to approve I-2 zoning?
No, you can approve, you can make a motion to recommend approval for I-1 on the frontage, I-2 behind that, with the word "frontage" to be defined later.
That's a little squishy.
Well, so is asking me to split the property, but...
How about, how about literally, we pass this to the end of the docket, and you come up with a number?
We won't have time to do that. I mean, Mohammed is here, but he would need to, you know, presumably in AutoCAD, literally lay out the building. They're just not that far along. But whatever staff's concerns are, we're happy to work with them on where that I-1, I-2 line should be, and we'll do it.
I'll let the commissioners decide if they're comfortable with that.
Wait, do we know the scale of this building that's going to be built?
It's likely to be a single-story office building. The whole purpose we're here is for the outdoor storage piece, right, in the back? And so just defining where that back is, staff has had some suggestions, and we're And so, just defining where that back is, staff has had some suggestions and we're going to go back and look at those and have Mohammed lay it out, but we'd like to move along. Because this came as a surprise to us.
Well, I one, or for one, believe that staff is totally capable of implementing the intent of this in that discussion.
Sure.
So, I am comfortable with that personally, but I'll leave it up to the others as well.
I would echo that in that the property to the south, you have buildings that, the issue for your site is that it's directly across from this neighborhood. So, I'm totally in agreement with the chairwoman about trying to protect the very front of this parcel from being outdoor storage.
Sure.
And the property to your south that is I2 has buildings along the frontage. So, what's the setback right there? I mean, just...
Well, to my, that's a very different use. I believe that's like a batting cage, right?
I understand, but they have I2 and the point is the structures are in the front so you don't see the outdoor storage.
Right, yeah, right, and it is I2. So, there wasn't a concern at that point for I2.
So...
Okay, that's two.
Yep.
Anybody else? You have thoughts about whether you want to have this sorted out now and let it go forward and let, leave it to staff?
I'm okay letting it go forward.
Same.
Yeah.
And staff, how do we feel about that? Have you had to arm wrestle Mr. Box lately? Do you know?
I would just say right off the cuff, the number I'd be looking at is about 200 feet.
Sounds like a good number.
Does sound like a good number, 200 feet.
I mean, I do have concerns. Knowing someone that's very, you know, doing site plans, if you don't know what kind of parking, what kind of circulation, what the building footprint is, it's very difficult to agree to something, a hard number. So, until you at least have an opportunity to do some test fits.
I would go just the other way on that, but...
But whatever staff's comfortable with, when we can sit down and show them, then...
200 feet seems like an absolutely minimal number to me, but...
Well, there'd be nothing keeping us if we were to say the 200 feet. The city council could then also amend that, couldn't they?
It'd be a recommendation in theory, so...
Of course they could.
Yeah. So...
There you go.
There's no problem to me if you're all right with at least saying the...
We'll take 200 feet, understanding that I don't want to be called a liar if it's 202 feet when someone drives by it because the building is two feet long. So, sure.
Fair enough.
All right then. Have I asked if there's anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of item nine, subject to the following change, that the front, the eastern 200 feet will be zoned I1. Does that, does that make sense? Does that work?
That's it.
Okay.
Shall in there, shall.
Shall, okay.
Subject to revision.
Yes. Subject to revision.
Yeah, that's...
And negotiation.
No, no, not that. It's going to go forward, just like everything else goes forward to council and they'll have all the same power they always have, so... I've been motion a second to approve item number nine with the amendment that the eastern 200 feet will be zoned I1. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 10 is an application to rezone 10500 Broadway Extension from PUD 655 to SPUD 1127.
Good afternoon once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is a bit of a unique application in that it was zoned through a fight that ended up at District Court way back when. The site has sat fallow, unable to be developed since then. My client, in an effort to try to find a way to get this site to develop, we sat down, kind of re-envisioned the uses, re-envisioned what could be built there. And so, we have come back now with this SPUD to add uses and therefore hopefully make the site more marketable and able to be developed. There are TEs, three of them, all of which we agree to, but on one, you know, it is, I mean, you could have a fairly large-scale development. There is over 400 feet of frontage and so I don't know why we need to limit it to one accessory sign. We'd like to have the ability to have two, as outlined in the spud, but otherwise, we agree the technical valuations.
What is the potential number of tenants?
Well, I mean, unknown at this point, obviously, but with 400 feet of frontage and the site that's, you know, fairly deep, you could have multiple buildings and I'd hate to limit, you know, a potential user because only one sign exists with that much frontage.
Why was this case continued seven times?
We had a legal description issue. Back in the mid-'90s, when these sites were being partialled off, there was some leftover legal that was problematic with this site and the site, I believe, adjacent to the south, which was also, is also owned by my client and previously developed. And so, we became aware of a bust in our legal description and it was not a simple fix. We had to get a title company involved and it took months and months and months to finally get a legal description that the title company would sign off on for us to then get an ownership list that was accurate.
Commissioners, shall I give my usual speech about how PUDs and SPUDs are not to be used for non-accessory signs? It seems to me fairly obvious that that's what this one's for. To the extent that there's any validity at all to the other uses that are being added, I don't think this is a good place for fast food or fast food drive-in. I wouldn't approve one sign, let alone two, so I assume there may be other comments that other commissioners might wish to offer.
Now, the two versus one is on the accessory sign. Surely, the chair is okay with accessory signs. So, I'm not trying to add non-accessory, multiple non-accessory signs. The TE only deals with accessory signs.
I see.
And I would disagree. This is adding uses that don't otherwise exist. The site has sat there since 1998, unable to be developed for market conditions or who knows what, but having the ability to have additional uses is certainly a proper function of a planned unit development.
It seems to me that this is simply a piece of property that hasn't been developed yet. I don't think it's necessarily a piece of property that can't be developed, given the development that's going on along this side of Broadway Extension a little further to the south. I think its time is coming, unless it's not developable, in which case I think that would simply strengthen my argument that the real purpose of the PUD is to, the SPUD is to put up a billboard, so...
So, my client is not only a developer, but he's also a broker. And so, I mean, he firmly believes, based upon market conditions and his attempt, he's had a sign out there since he bought it in the '90s, his inability to get a tenant or get someone interested in buying the site in large part is because of some of the concessions that were made way back when. And so, a lot of time has passed. We're simply trying to rezone it to allow additional uses and in that, we do ask for a billboard. I would note that it meets all local and state spacing requirements. It's on a highway. Until ASIT gets his wish and we don't have highways, this is where we can expect to see billboards. Staff does recommend approval.
So, we are or are not building billboards?
The use shoot it for a billboard is included in there.
It's in there?
Uh-huh.
Aside from the sign use...
Uh-huh.
There is R1 that's undeveloped land that's to the east of this.
Correct.
That would have access off of 106, which is Hefner.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, as a result of that, I have some concern over some of the use units. We're going to get to talk about an idea of why that later in another case, why outdoor recreation can create problems for residential homeowners. So, I mean, you've got participant recreation, entertainment, outdoors, subject to review and approval. I'd want you to strike that.
Well, the subject to review and approval means it's a special permit.
I understand, but just as...
So, we'd have to send notice and come here to get approval.
Yeah, but I don't want it to be misconstrued that this was a good location for it on the eastern side of the track. I'm just...
So, a special permit, though, I want to make sure we're saying the same thing. It's not like it's a specific plan review. It's simply, under C3, it's listed as a special permit use.
Right.
And so, they'd have to file an applic, it's a zoning case in which you have absolute discretion to look at it as a zoning case, to review and approve whether or not specific or a special permit for that use is appropriate, given the nature of the surrounding areas.
I'm guessing that Commissioner Cravens is anticipating that at that time, we will hear you say, "It's permitted by the zoning."
But it's not. I worked with staff to specifically add that language. It will come on, just like every other special permit, whether it's a crematorium or, cell towers is a bad example, but a special permit is not one that you can say.
So, is it your argument that having this in here is of no value whatsoever?
Well, because it's a pud and spud and we have now changed the way that the intro to the summary reads, we say the site will be developed in accordance with the regulations of C3 and as long as there's no argument that, that doesn't preclude us when we list and say, "These are the only uses allowed." As long as we're still eligible for conditional uses and special permit uses upon appropriate review and approval, then I'm fine with taking it out.
And I guess I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Cravens say is that he has a problem with it, so...
Well, let me finish. 8300.36, drive-through order window, close to residential. We have compatibility issues brought up about that all the time and make adjustments to that all the time. Lodging accommodations is particularly sensitive for me. The spectator sports and entertainment restricted. I mean, these are just uses that next to residential have created problems. We know they create problems. I think the staff report even references that there could be some compatibility issues with some of the use units. And to me, you came in today to get use units added, not just for sign, but for the purposes of creating the zoning. If there's a need for that, you can always come back and get the use unit added if there's, you know, it's the same thing as the special permit in my mind. I don't want to confuse the future planning commission that there was ever an agreement, this was a good location because we didn't know how it was going to develop.
Sure. Fair enough. I think we're misunderstanding what a special permit is compared to...
No, I understand it. I understand that you'd still have to come back. I get that. To me, it's one and the same, though.
But it's not coming back. It is its own independent zoning application. It's not like...
But you have to go through the process again, right? You'd have to, a special permit would have to come to us and then go on to council, right?
Correct. The issue is, do we, you know, what I think staff says on a lot of these is, do we really want to go start spudding out other miniature portions of other spuds? Like, perhaps the use isn't appropriate. That's why, at the time, if they were to use that, they'd have to file an applic, a zoning application pursuant to the specific plan, excuse me, the special permit process.
Process, I get it. So, we'd have a chance to hear it and presumably the only reason you'd come back is because you had a use in hand.
We would have a real deal with a site plan that would address all the things that you would have.
Yeah.
But in terms of the eating establishment, what we've done in the past is limited to no closer than, it would have to be at least 150 feet away from any residential use and we're happy to agree to that language.
Okay, and that would be the same for, what is eating establishment, drive-in?
Sonic.
Okay, so that, I'd feel the same way about that.
Yeah, we're fine with the drive-in, the fast food with drive-through window and the fast food being the 150 feet away from any residential use.
And, okay, and then you're good with striking 8300.66 and 8300.51? Or do you want to preserve lodging for, along the frontage road, which I would have no objection to?
All right, so why don't we push the lodging at least 150 feet off of residential, like the three restaurant use units? Because I do think along the Broadway Extension at Hefner, I don't know that a hotel is inappropriate.
I don't, no, no, no. I agree that it's appropriate. I just don't want it pushed up against.
It's not at Hefner, though.
Yeah.
Well, but yeah, so perhaps it's 150 feet off of any residential use.
Perhaps it's 250 feet off any residential use.
250 feet for that one.
So, we're 150 for 8300.34 at 35 and 36 and we're 250 for the lodging?
Yes, sir.
Is that where we are? And just see, I mean, my rationale for that is just purely based on the height of that commercial lodging.
Right.
Getting it away from the residential use, nobody, nobody wants that. And then that 150 is consistent with some of the other cases we've done recently to with getting drive-through order windows away from, you know, residential. That, that's all fine. I don't know how everybody else feels. I guess I'm, you know, fine with the special permit from my personal standpoint on the, you know, the participant recreation and entertainment. I just, I'm not sure that I see the difference. I just, I don't even like including that use unit unless it is just wholly appropriate. Like, there was one in Chisholm Creek where they were going to do a pop-up soccer. Totally fine. There's nothing, I mean, that made all the sense in the world, but I don't know. I just, I don't know. That's my two cents on it.
All right, we're fine. We can delete the 66, the spectator sports entertainment restricted.
I couldn't imagine what that would be.
I mean, you might have a small batting cage. I mean, there's a restricted in general. The restricted is, you know, meant for less people. I think it deals with no outdoor illumination.
And it's not a special permit requirement.
And it's not. It's a permitted under C3, but...
Batting cage, every time. Yeah.
We'll just force everybody to go to Chisholm Creek instead of this site to get their pop-up soccer.
Well, it's in Ward 8, so I mean, yeah.
That's my objective all along.
My gosh.
Anyone else? I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard? We do have someone who wishes to be heard. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, William Hickman, 330 West Gray Street. I represent Lamar Outdoor Advertising and want to speak to you briefly about this spud request. In particular, we object to this request. As many of y'all know, you've heard Lamar has raised issues in the past and will continue to raise issues about the abuse and use of this spud ordinance to allow the proliferation of billboards in areas where they're otherwise not allowed. And that's exactly what this spud request also does. And I just want to read to you guys from your own ordinance, where first, my first point here is about your spud ordinance. Your spud ordinance, Section 59-14100, objectives and use under the spud code, goals and objectives, maintain consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, this chapter, and other applicable plans, policies, standards, and regulations. This spud request is not consistent with the city's long-term comprehensive plan, Plan OKC, which discusses reducing the number of billboards, not adding the number of billboards, and it's not consistent with your other standards being your signed ordinance because it would allow a larger billboard than allowed on C3 property and a digital billboard on C3 property and a billboard that could continue to be on that property even after construction occurred of a building, all of which are not allowed under C3 zoning. So, it's also inconsistent with other standards. Additionally, the next section talks about appropriate use of pud and spuds. The pud and spud are appropriately used when flexibility is required that is not allowed under the zoning code in return for a coordinated development that provides greater public benefits, as outlined in the purpose and intent, that are not otherwise part of the development process. This use, this billboard, is not necessary and is not a part of the development. Period. So, how is the spud, how is flexibility needed in this spud to allow a billboard use that is not a part of the development? There's no negotiation, if you will, regarding the comment we heard earlier about number of accessory signs. That's a fair topic of debate, maybe. Do we allow more flexibility in the spud process to allow more accessory signs or not because of the particular aspect of this development? Allowing a new use of a billboard has nothing to do with this development, hence, this is an abuse and inappropriate use of the spud process to allow the non-accessory use. And then finally, the pud and spud are design and planning tools that are not to be used to circumvent policies or used in lieu of seeking variances to regulations. If this property owner wants a billboard on this property, the place to go is the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance. Your code specifically with regard to the use of spuds prohibits this kind of actions. You have continued to authorize them and recommend them at least, and your council has been approving them. We don't want to have to continue to sue the city over this issue, but this is not allowed under your own ordinance and it's not consistent with your long-term plan, being Plan OKC. I would, one thing that I'm a little confused about is why the staff report on this particular one does not specifically address the billboard, either has a technical evaluation or comment on it like other reports I've seen, including the last one, I believe, that I was not able to be here for, but Mr. Condon spoke about, where the staff did specifically point out the billboard and how it was inconsistent and that maybe it should not be included. So, I'm not sure if there's different people writing the reports or whatever, but I think it's important that the city, one, takes a consistent position and enforces its rules. It's not fair to the outdoor advertising industry, participants as a whole, to continue to allow billboards to be put in places that are not otherwise allowed using the spud process. Period. We have rules, you have ordinance, you have a signed ordinance. Enforce it and follow it. Don't let it be circumvented by spuds. And if somebody wants a billboard in a place that's otherwise not allowable, the proper venue for that is to go ask for a variance from the Board of Adjustment.[1770.87] the proper venue for that is to go ask for a variance from the Board of Adjustment. That happens all the time. Sometimes they're approved, sometimes they're not approved. I would encourage you all to read your Plan OKC document. It was a massive document that many, many people were involved in and took more than a year to put together. And it clearly sets forth the principles and the policies intended for this city on a go-forward basis. And they are not to increase the number of billboard signs. And I want to be clear, that's what you will be doing by allowing this billboard use on this property, because if the property's developed as C-3, which it is, there will not be a billboard on there. Period. Those are your rules. No billboards are allowed on C-3 property that's developed. So if you allow this billboard on this site, you will be allowing a billboard to be at a location that would otherwise not be allowed when this property's developed. I don't know if it's developed already or not, so I'm not quite sure if there's even a building there right now. If there is, the billboard couldn't be built, period. But if there's not, the billboard would not be able to be there after the building is built. So I want to be clear about that. Finally, you're allowing a digital billboard also to be placed on this location, which I understand there's residential property nearby. I don't know, haven't heard any discussion about potential impact on residential zone property in the proximity of this digital billboard. But you also do have, I believe, a spacing restriction with regard to digital signage from residentially zoned property. And I don't know if that's something that has been raised or not or discussed, but I wanted to at least raise that has another potential issue for consideration. But the bottom line, from my client's perspective, is the spud ordinance does not allow the use of the spud ordinance in the way that it's being used to allow, to add a use that has nothing to do with the development, and that is inconsistent with your comprehensive plan and your other ordinances, and it's not intended to circumvent other ordinances. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Because we've had this debate already on the planning commission, so I'm not going to go back and forth about this. I think the summary is, some of us feel strongly that the PUD process shouldn't be used. Some of us feel like it doesn't. Both agree that the revisions of the code should address this issue. My question is two things. One, wouldn't you, or in your business, be allowed to, since this has been the action of the planning commission to approve spuds, wouldn't you have the same ability as any other developer to do this exact same process, since the commission itself has been doing it? And then my second question is, is there ever a set of circumstances in which a spud can be used for a billboard, or is your position that absolutely not? That can absolutely not happen?
To your first question, my understanding, and your lawyer stepped out of the room, but the answer would be that each zoning case is unique, given of itself and the facts itself, and in the fact that your city council has approved some spuds and have denied some spuds. They proved one and denied one the night that I was, the last time I was there, when, on this very issue about billboards being in a spud. So the answer to your question, sure, anybody could pay the money and bring forward a spud and make the request, but it's not what the spud ordinance is allowed to be done. And my client has not done that. Lamar has not done that, just to be clear, and does not intend to do it. But the same time, at some point, I may have to make a business decision to decide to get into this game, if that's going to be the game that the city's going to allow. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. You know, and, you know, and I don't, they don't want to do that. They don't think it's appropriate. You know, and right now, they're paying me to come and to file lawsuits and to raise these issues in front of these governing boards. And we've offered to work with the city to address the sign ordinance and to make revisions to it. So we're, we are here to be a good community partner and to work with the city. At the same time, we want the city to do, to enforce the rules that are in place right now, and then let's have a conversation. If you want to make the spud ordinance allow this kind of actions, if you will, then at least we can be a part of that process and know then what the rules are for the industry. But to continue to circumvent the sign ordinance through the spud process is, one, just not, it's not appropriate, it's not allowed by your own ordinance from our perspective. And I think, I think your spud ordinance is pretty clear, after just read sections from it for you, that it, that it's not intended to be, it's not to be used to circumvent the other ordinances in your, in your code.
So to be clear, your position is absolutely not. Under no set of circumstances can any spud ever create a billboard, ever. You, the only way to do it is through the, through that other method.
I don't know if I can say never, ever. I mean, I'm a lawyer. There may be some sort of, I mean...
So then, since you left the door open just now, right? So since you just left the door open, doesn't that leave, it's subject to our interpretation of whether this is an appropriate use of a spud?
If it was, if there was some, if there was some ways, so if there was some way that it tied to the development and it met the requirements of the spud, I mean, I'm a lawyer. I'm going to be objective with you, even though I'm here for a client. You know, maybe there might be. But this one certainly isn't, and none of the ones that I have seen certainly meet the requirements of the spud ordinance. And it certainly, as long as your ordinance is written the way that it is, I think the answer to your question is probably that, no, no spud could be used, because the way the ordinance is currently written. Because I don't see how a billboard sign is a part of the development for which the spud ordinance is intended to allow for flexibility, and it's a negotiation essentially with your staff and the developer. That's what spuds are designed to do, to allow some negotiation, create some flexibility relating to the development. This billboard is not a part and/or associated in any fashion with the development. What they're wanting to negotiate with you is the number of accessory signs, it sounds like. And I said, that may be a fair topic for the spud to address, or like landscape buffering, things like that. But how a billboard has anything to do with the development, in this instance, I can, in my opinion, has nothing to do with it. Therefore, it's inappropriate use of the spud ordinance, and it's a circumvention of the sign ordinance. The solution, if they choose to follow it, is to go to the Board of Adjustment, which is a quasi-judicial body, and ask for a variance. And they can make the decision whether or not to grant it or not.
You're, you're taking a pretty trenchant position on our code and the Plan OKC. You quoted 59-14. What was the rest of that? I want to make sure that I have a chance to review that specifically. And then, if you could, humor me and direct me in the comp plan where it specifically addresses the objective criteria we should consider when evaluating this within the comp plan.
It was 59 dash 14-100.
Okay.
Section, objectives and use, dealing with PUDs and spuds. At least, that's what I have on my phone from, from, I believe, the website.
Okay. And, and so it essentially says to maintain Plan OKC, et cetera, et cetera. So where in Plan OKC does it specifically address the objective criteria for us to consider in reducing billboards, other than just, we should reduce billboards?
I don't have the actual Plan OKC document with me. I've referenced it in the past. Maybe, I'm not sure if I have to this board in a while. But there are multiple instances in that document where it discusses billboard signs and the reduction in the number of billboard signs. I think even calls it clutter. And so from that perspective, you know, in general, it clearly sets forth the intended policy of the community to not increase the number of billboard signs, but to reduce the number of billboard signs. The Plan OKC document is one of the vision, planning-type document. It doesn't have, you know, to my recollection of reading it, it doesn't have specific zoning or other aspects to it like that.
Right. It's a...
No, it's just a guide.
It's a plan. And so the ordinance, the separation requirement, would be something that would be particularly meaningful to me if I were considering a specific zoning ordinance, PUD or an SPUD. If we were in, if we were violating that in some way, if there was a size requirement that was being exceeded, that would be something that I would consider. For the people who have not had the unique opportunity to serve on the Board of Adjustment, I'll tell you, his, his critique of that process, I don't totally agree with. I was there for four years. You've served on it longer than that, I think. You're on it now.
I didn't. If I sound like I critique the Board of Adjustment, the variance process, I don't think that I did. I was saying that was the way to go.
You just mischaracterized it. If, if you brought a case to us at the Board of Adjustment, at least when I was there, and you said, "We want you to look at this sign," we would say, "We're not going to do that." If, if, that's a legislative thing. If you want to go through that process and you think you can get it done, you need to go talk to Planning Commission and City Council in order to have that completed. We never once, that I can recall, a specific instance of, would take that on, because we felt like we were circumventing the legislative process, which is what this, this is, right?
I think, I think, to be fair, it is, it is perhaps an overstatement that if one wants a sign, one needs to go to the Board of Adjustment. It's, it's like every other Board of Adjustment case. It has to meet specific requirements for hardship and so on.
But no...
And there have been and are valid Board of Adjustment cases regarding signs.
But it's not that. Mr. Hickman's apprehension of the Board of Adjustment process is simply misplaced. There's volume of case law that would fill this room that says, "Use variances are illegal," except there is a provision that used to allow use variances as related to oil and gas drilling operations. Use variances are illegal because the decision to grant a use is a zoning decision, which by definition is legislative, not quasi-judicial. So what he is suggesting, suggesting is illegal, and we could never go to the Board of Adjustment. We could if we had a billboard and we needed to go taller.
Right.
But the use itself...
That's my, that's...
He's wrong.
That's my point, is that they would bring them up, and we would get, we were told then by our municipal councillor, this is not, and I got that in my head year one on the Board of Adjustment, so they, they were just punted back anytime someone tried to do that. So I don't know.
There have been, there have been variance requests filed to put billboards in places. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing.
Spacing.
That may be dealing with spacing issues like that, which is similar to what we're talking about here, putting it in a location that's otherwise not legal. Now, I understand there's a zoning aspect to this, but my point is, is that people have gone to the Board of Adjustment to seek relief, to, to allow billboards to be built in places that they're otherwise not allowable. That's a minor part of what I said. To me, the issue for this body to consider is the applicability of the spud ordinance to this kind of conduct of using a spud to allow a use that has nothing to do with the development, that circumvents the existing other ordinances, including the sign ordinance and your comprehensive plan. And I don't think there's any debating, in my opinion, that this spud, allowing this billboard use at a location that otherwise would not allow that particular billboard, does circumvent the sign ordinance and circumvents your long-term plan. If you want to be inconsistent and go against the words in your own spud ordinance, your long-term plan, and your sign ordinance, then you can support this request, and we will continue to object and protest. We're asking that you stop recommending these things, stop approving them, and let's have a conversation between the city and the industry and figure out what's the proper thing to do. Is it to make it clear that this is allowed, or that it's not allowed, and then go forward?
Thank you, and thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us.
Can I address one more?
I think we've had, I think we've had this issue fairly clearly framed.
Briefly, I want to just make sure the commission looks at this in the way that I believe is right. I don't think you're circumventing anything. You're making a legislative call on whether or not the use is appropriate, just like Commissioner Craven's did on five other uses, one of which he asked us to take out. And the reason we took it out was, he didn't believe it to be appropriate. But he said, "If it is, file a new application and see." So I don't think if we came back with the spectators for it, we'd be accused by Lamar of circumventing the ordinance. You guys are making a judgment call on a use. It's as simple as that. PUDs and spuds are used every other Thursday, every other Tuesday at City Council to circumvent ordinance.
I think, to be fair, I think, I think the specific portion of the ordinance that he's referring to is, relates to C-3 property. That's your base district here, not, not permitting non-accessory signs if it is otherwise developed. So I, I think that's a fairly, you know, a fair way to characterize that.
It's a...
I understand that you don't agree with it, but that's fine.
It's a fair complaint, but, but so would, you know, if there was a certain setback required in a development, and we came in with a spud, and we sought to have a shorter or smaller setback than what would otherwise be required in the base zoning district, you do that every other Thursday.
And I think his point is, for a reason. There's some reason why that's being done. There's some trade-off there. There's some way in which it contributes to the overall development. In this case, there's a lack of that. To be fair, I think that's what he's saying.
There is one thing that he mentioned that I, I intended to mention before, and I forgot. I would, because of the fact that the residential is on that east side, are you in agreement to install the louvers like we've been...
Sure.
...requiring along the, okay.
We can add that as a technical evaluation. I can't remember the language, but I think it's light shielding or light directing louvers away from any residential use.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions or comments for our applicant or each other?
I'm surprised you're giving up your accessory signage, square footage. I mean, as a C-3 zone, you would get two, 200 square foot signs.
Yeah. So if I had my preference, I'd delete TE one, agree to two and three, and then add the TE four as it relates to the louvers.
I don't have any objection to that. I'm with you. I don't have any objection to that.
Me either.
David?
Did I miss, did you agree to TE's two and three?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
But I'm happy to debate it if...
No.
I'd rather not.
I think we're probably at a place where I'll entertain a motion.
And I, I do want to say before I make the motion, that I think it's appropriate now for us to start having those conversations, if they aren't already, about the use of the spud process with our city councilmen that are concerned and, and planning commissioners. I know I, for one, am happy to go to those meetings about that issue so that we can start to get to a good resolution. But my position is still the same, that I think the SPUD process is an appropriate process to create, to add that use unit. So, that being said, I move approval of item 10, subject to the following amendments. Removing technical evaluation, number one. Adding technical, additional technical evaluation, requiring that light shielding louvers be attached to the non-accessory billboard so that it's away from residential use. Does that make sense?
Yes. We also need to add a TE on eighty-three hundred point three-four, three-five, and three-six shall be no closer than 150 feet away.
Let's get into that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. But yes, for use units eighty-three hundred point three-four, point three-five, and point three-six must be at least 150 feet away from the resident, the neighboring residential. Use unit eighty-three hundred point five-one must be at least 250 feet away from the residential, and eliminating use unit eighty-three hundred point six, I think that should be seven, six-six. Two, there's two six-sixes, though. So is it...
Whichever one is the sports and...
Whichever one is spectator sports and entertainment.
Yes, I agree.
That's my motion.
I have a motion in the second to approve item number 10 with the additions and corrections to the technical evaluations as read. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
Item 11 is an application to rezone 1118 and 1130 Northwest 16th Street from R3 and O1 to SPUD 1174.
Hello, Jeff Struble, 1111 Northwest 15th Street. We're excited about this project. We're going to hopefully be able to put a nice building with some parking there on 16th and almost Classen. Kind of a, kind of neat, the Pivot Project is doing a really neat project across the street. We're hoping to kind of complement what they're doing. We, on the TE four, we are, we're talking to the staff about that, and we're willing to limit, do a time limit till 11 o'clock on outside, the outside, I'm sorry, the square footage, I'm sorry, on TE four, we're going to do 4,000 square feet, just the bottom floor for the, for number four. And then on the number three, TE number three, the limited outdoor seating on the north side, we're, talk with staff about limiting the time of that till 11 o'clock.
So not limiting it to the north, but limiting the time.
Correct. Yeah, we, oh, yeah. So we want, we wanted on, we have three really big, mature trees there, and it just makes sense to have a, you know, a seating area out there. So that's what we're wanting to do. And we do landscape, you know, do some, you know, some buffers there, too. And then...
I'm sorry, are you limiting the, the drinking establishment use to the first floor?
On the square footage, yes. On number four, we are looking at just, yeah, limiting that to 4,000 square feet, just the first floor. Yes.
Those are two different things.
Yes.
4,000 square feet and the first floor.
Correct. That's number four. And then number three...
No, no, let's be clear about this. Those are two different things. 4,000 square feet is 4,000 square feet. The first floor is the first floor.
Right.
Are you agreeing to both of those things?
Well, I'm open. We wouldn't, the first floor would be great, but I think 4,000 square feet would be plenty of a restaurant or in that building.
But we're not talking about a restaurant. We're talking about a drinking establishment.
There's going to be a patio on the second floor, right? There's not going to be any drinking up there, or is it just...
I think the patio is just on the first floor.
Right. The patio is on the first floor. So that, so that's... So number four...
My, my quick read of this?
Yeah.
Is it, right, I mean, do we care if it, if it splits the first and the second, if it's 4,000 square feet? To me, the more important number is the square footage.
Oh, yeah. It's just got to be either one or, either or. It's either the first floor...
No, no, not, no, not at all. I, I'm not saying I care. I'm saying I'm not clear what it is he's trying to tell us.
I think it's the square footage.
Yeah, the square footage. I'm sorry. Just square footage of the building.
Which I think was the intent of staff with that TE, based on my discussion with them. them. So I would think that this, you know, answers staff's issue on that.
And so this is our response to TE number 3, which limits outdoor seating to the north side of the building?
No, that's number, that's number 4. That's TE number 4, the 4,000 square feet. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Okay.
If you could, on TE 3?
Yep.
So are you, are you in agreement with the TE to limit outdoor seating to the north side of the building?
No. We want seating on the west side of the building.
The west side of the building.
But we're willing to limit the time, you know...
Hours of operation.
Yes, hours of operation because the, you know, the residential in the area.
Which, again, I'll speak up. In talking with staff, that was, they saw, my understanding, Sarah's over here, she can speak up if she disagrees with what I'm about to say, is my understanding that that answered the issue as well that they had with the location of the patio.
So that most directly brings it in conflict with the R1 to the west.
Right, which is why they wanted to limit the time.
To 11:00 PM.
Well, I guess it's up to this body whether 11:00 PM is acceptable, but that was the intent of that.
Perhaps we should hear from staff about their thoughts on this topic. Sarah?
We're fighting over who gets to talk to you. So as far as the TE number 3 was our attempt, so if you, currently, if you have a commercial district that allows a bar, or a commercial district, it allows a bar with a special permit, there are conditions placed on a special permit that the seating has to be at least 100 feet from residential. So this spud includes the bar use. This is our attempt to move the outdoor seating areas away from residential, but through the special, the reason that patios through the special permit process or a special permit is it allows the applicant to make other, you know, they might, in his case, he's going to limit hours of operation to, instead of the location of the patio. It allows some flexibility in addressing any potential impacts to residential.
And also, on that same note, we were looking at just doing the patio, the width of the building, which is at the front of the property, so with the alley, that puts us really close to 100 feet away from the residential. And then, and across the street, of course, we're pretty close to that, the building's 100 feet away on both sides, if we...
Is that how we measure it, from building to building? Does the street count?
I'd have to look up the new ordinance, how we measure it. We are not, we're not, the moving to the north side of the building is just one suggestion for us to mitigate any potential noise impacts to the residential to the west and the south. So it's a spud, and this is what Mr. Struble can propose, other mitigation measures that you might be comfortable with.
I understood when we talked that you were not married to this design, so wouldn't it be just as easy to put the patio on the east side of the building? If I lived in that house across the street, I would not be comforted by the fact that the bar outdoors is only going to operate until 11:00 PM.
Well, I live behind this building, and I don't want loud music in a bar late at night because I go to bed early myself, so 11 o'clock seems reasonable, but I'm open for suggestions.
I think my response to that would be that that's a temporary situation, but the zoning is a permanent situation.
Right. No, definitely.
I just want to say, regardless of whatever you do, I do think that if you keep the location as a piece of it, we will have to amend TE 3 a little bit because it talks about any outdoor seating, so if you had a, you know, if you had an office use with an outdoor seating area, I think it could potentially be administered in a way that we don't all intend right now. Okay.
And is it just the bar aspect that makes you uneasy, or...
In the time, yep.
In the time.
I actually don't think that the suggestion to move it to the east side's terrible. I mean, obviously, you've got setbacks that you have to adhere to with the new building, but again, this seems like one of those issues that, you know, some clever design decisions would lead to a pretty simple solution, I would think.
Well, and we have three really mature trees on the west side, and that's what we're really, with the shade, it just really, and then adding some landscape in there is really going to make that a nice area there on the west side, so that's really, you know, what our, you know, what we'd like to do.
Yeah, so the whole intent behind that design decision was to utilize the existing mature trees.
Right.
Which I get, but again, that doesn't really do a lot to buffer the residential uses to the west, and that's a problem for me. I don't have a problem with the idea. I noticed that you do have a little bit of a balcony on the upstairs, but since it's on the north side of the building, I guess that takes care of itself.
Mm-hmm.
If the building is situated, and if this is the building we end up with, which Commissioner Cravens will be quick to remind me, is not necessarily the case. I am not thrilled, I'll just be really honest with you, I am not thrilled about a drinking establishment use at this location on anything like a 4,000-foot scale.
What is the mixed-use nature of the property being developed across the street? In the first floor of that, some sort of, it's a, they've got retail component in there, don't they?
They have retail, they have the same uses as we have here. So they have a bar, restaurant, retail, office, residential.
Do they, they have a drinking establishment?
Mm-hmm.
I remember restaurant, I don't remember drinking establishment.
Right here.
I know you're not in an overlay district, where you're planning to try to match the class of the overlay.
Yeah, just matching the zoning, yeah, the, yes, spud 926, yeah, they have drinking establishment, sit-down, alcohol permitted in their spud. I have it right here, if you'd like to...
For me, I'm with the chair in that the, I mean, I totally understand the trees and all that, it's just, I don't feel comfortable putting a drinking establishment at 11:00 PM across the street from somebody's house. I mean, for me, it's going to have to go on the east side for me to get there.
Well, if we...
At least the outdoor use.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if we, I wonder if we would take the drinking establishment off and just leave it as a restaurant, they could use that, would that...
And we could lower the hours of operation, then?
On the outside, well, to, to, what were you thinking?
Well, I don't think, I don't, just to be clear, I don't think that, I think there's consensus about wanting to mitigate the outdoor drinking use, either by moving it or limiting the hours of operation. I don't know that, I don't know that we care that there is a drinking establishment that's indoors versus a restaurant. I don't think that's the issue, right? Just to be clear about opinion, maybe not?
You know, I think I could, I could live with it if it's indoors during reasonable times and away from residential. That's the thing.
What's that, what's that place that's just to the...
To the west.
Yeah, yeah.
Anatomy, that's what you're thinking of.
Yeah, like, I mean, in my mind, that doesn't create an issue for the surrounding. I think this fits, I mean, I think your development fits within the context of the area and all that, it's just, some of these little nuances may seem a little silly, but they make a big difference. I've got little kids, there's a big difference in my world between 9:00 PM and 11:00 PM, I can tell you that. And there's a big difference between a patio that's right in front of my driveway and one that's on the far side of a three-story building, you know, and how it affects my use of the property there as a resident. So, I mean, you know, that's where I am. If we want to try to narrow this down so we can make a motion and vote on this thing...
Well, we, I think we've still got a lot more to talk about on this item anyway, before we get too far.
Okay.
But I want to speak to, I guess, you know, obviously, since it's my warden, I live nearby, I think for further context, I think the Anatomy Wine Bar is a good example. I would go further, actually, to the other side of the plaza, to another one of Jeff's developments, which is, you know, the new building that has Empire, which I believe happens to have a...
Have outside seating on the side, and it's...
Outside seating next to R1.
Right next to a one-story house.
Obviously, you know, everything's, we look at every item as unique, but my question on that one, I guess, would be, what, did you have to come through and rezone that?
It was part of the plaza overlay, so maybe not.
Okay, part of the plaza overlay, yeah.
And we, and there is an eight-foot, you know, fence there also with landscaping, of course.
Yeah.
So, and like I said, we were really wanting to make it look nice and do, you know, put some good landscaping buffers in there also.
In the end, on the, I don't know, I was fairly comfortable with the 11:00 PM myself, but I'm not hurt by, you know, my fellow commissioners necessarily wanting you to go further in the end. You know, you've got to make the decision on that one, on what you want to present to this group.
Just as a, as a business matter, it would seem to me to make more sense to move the use to the west, to the east side of the building than to give up hours of operation, but, you know, that's on you, of course, it's your business, your decision, but...
It would sound like the mature, healthy trees aren't a sell for this crowd.
Well, that's...
No, of course, they would be lovely, but they, but they don't provide buffering in any significant way to light and sound and, you know...
I'm agreeing. I guess what I'm saying is, we know that that was important for the location of the patio to you, but it sounds like you might consider it being on the east side.
No, really, I'm pretty, I mean, and...
Even if that means like 10:00 PM?
You know, I could probably live with 10:00 PM. I...
Are your kids in bed by 10:00 PM, Scott?
They better be. I'm better be.
I mean, even that's a real push.
Then again, you know, I mean, I know this doesn't apply to everybody, but me and my kids aren't going to live in the plaza district either for a reason, so...
Right.
There's that.
When is the city's noise ordinance?
It's 11:00, I thought.
Well, it's, there's a, there's a...
Noise.
All the time, noise ordinance, from a desk level perspective, but it changes after a certain hour.
Oh.
What is that hour?
If you, I think if you would rather live with 10:00, then push it to the east side, I could live with that, given where we are.
You mean the west side?
I'm sorry.
But 10:00, I'm...
The outdoor patio.
Yeah, the outdoor patio. I'm fine with that, because I'm not, we're not wanting to rent to some late-night drinking establishment, something that's going to be, you know, real loud and...
Okay.
So...
Did you have something else you wanted to talk about, because I want to talk about signs?
I think we've just got to go through all these TE's, right? We've talked about two specifically, but I...
Yeah.
I'm not looking at...
So, 2 is another one I didn't agree with, but that, but I want to talk about the parking, but the rest of them, I'm fine with, the other TE's.
Yep.
So we have the square footage that we figured out, number 3, I think we've got that taken care of.
I think so.
So number 2, is it, unless you have another one that you wanted to talk about?
Do you want to talk about signs first?
I do want, no, not first, I can wait my turn.
So this building, this gives us a lot of parking here with, using the right-of-way. It adds, I think we have, have in here 12 spaces if we can't get the 25-foot right-of-way. The right-of-way, I mean, the street ends the next block. I know I've been doing stuff in this area for many years, and that's what we hear all the time, is we need more parking. And then here, we have a way to give more parking. The project across the street needs more parking, too, so they were really glad to see that we're going to be able to put, hopefully put, a bigger parking lot in. So I don't think the city's going to put a four-lane road in there on Klein. I hope not, too. So I think that's a lot of space that could, you know, and we could, that we could utilize.
Can staff speak to this for us, please? Do you want to, Jeff, or do you want me to have them do it? Sarah? I think most people's knee-jerk reaction is that every little bit of parking you can squeeze out of the 16th Street District is a good one, but tell us, tell us what's the deal.
Well, because this is parking that's proposed to be within the public's right-of-way and access via the alley, so while it appear as private parking, it'll actually be within the public right-of-way, and we, I had a concern about setting a precedent that this would continue to come forward, and we would end up with parking lots streamed up and down, strung up and down the street.
Well, and we looked at this project at first, that's, we did look at street parking, but to put, the street parking, we're going to have to remove the three trees, and then still, with the setbacks up on the corner, we weren't going to get very many spaces in. You really want to leave the trees, so if we do, leave the trees and do street parking, we probably get about four parking spots. So it's a real significant difference in space that I think, that I don't think the city would have, you know, any use for in the future, but that's why we're...
I'm sorry, I'm stuck on what you said. You would prefer that they do street parking, or you're concerned that it would set a precedent for street parking?
I'm concerned that it would set a precedent, that people would be, we just said it, we just said it a few weeks ago on the Lyric Parking Lot, where we said, fit all of your parking within the confines of your site, and we're saying the same thing here. I think the question is, is the building scaled appropriately then for the parking that's available?
Well, that seems like a fair question.
Was there, Sarah, was there a conversation with Public Works about, you know, CE or no CE and today, or...
The other option would be that Mr. Struble could put a request in to close the portion of the right-of-way, and eventually vacate it, it would be a separate application, to make it private property.
See, I actually would rather not do that, although maybe that's a bigger conversation than we can have around the horseshoe today. If you're permitted to use this space for parking and even to meet your parking requirement, you understand that it's not yours, the city can come along someday and decide they are going to make Klein a four-lane street, and you're going to have to give it up, right?
Right, or if they got to do something, they can tear it up, and I'm responsible to put it back, so yes.
And I actually think that's kind of a better place to be than encouraging them to close it, but...
Yeah, I just was wondering what the process was from a Public Works perspective, whether there would be some kind of a permit to allow them to put parking in the right-of-way, or like there would be for angled parking.
Well, they would do the revocable.
Yeah, we'd do a revocable. And how I look at this, too, is it's a 100-foot right-of-way, so it's a huge right-of-way for that little street, so I, you know, I'm sure...
It's just one of, it's all over this area.
I might just raise the question whether it's inappropriate, something appropriate for a spud or not. You might just, you might just leave it up to the revocable process.
I'm okay with this.
Yeah, if the right-of-way is 100-foot, it makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, we're not, even 25 feet, we're not coming up to the curb that's already there. I mean, that's, it's a huge...
See, this is, this is actually one of the ones that I struggle with, that I agree with that, that we don't want to set a precedent of building on public land what is going to essentially be private parking, because I don't think anybody's going to realize they can come around the alley and park there for free.
Can we make them put up a sign, public parking?
Well, I still don't think anybody would, I mean, who's going to be like, oh, like, I don't know. There's a, with that physical separation, I see it as pretty different.
I think so, too.
I'm also...
I mean, they're not even building out to the curb here. I mean, they're not putting their parking out that far, so...
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's, you know, on the site plan, if it's built that way, it appears to be part of a parking lot.
Of course, yes, 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 yes.
And that's, to me, like, the separation, and I think it's what I'm hearing from Sarah. And at the same time, I just, you know, I understand businesses want more parking, but you guys all know where I'm at on parking in the plaza.
And us Okies have to have our car, and parking is a big, we're moving that way, we're, less parking is needed, but I still, also, I think this is going to really help the property, you know, the pivot group across the street, too, because they are really stressed for parking, so that, I think, is going to be, you know, good for everybody, too.
Because you lease parking to them.
No, it's going to be open parking.
I, because it's interior to their site and its development, I, you know, I can go either way on that item. I'm going to, I guess, bend to the will of the horseshoe on that, but I also will definitely make clear that I have no problem myself with eliminating that parking and sticking with that teeth, but recognizing, you know, the views of my peers.
I think it's a big, you know, move, positive move for the development to have that extra, you know, spaces.
Okay, are we still moving our way down the TE's?
And I'm agreeable with all the rest of them, those are the only ones, so if you wanted to talk about signage or anything, I'm...
I do. The staff report is just a little confusing to me. It says freestanding signs will be prohibited, and it says no accessory and EMD signs shall be prohibited, which clearly doesn't make any sense, and then it says a 4-by-6 monument sign will be allowed. I assume there's some kind of distinction there between freestanding signs and monument signs. I'm not sure what it is, but I also don't understand why it says no accessory and EMD signs shall be prohibited. I assume it means permitted. So I assume there'll be no accessories, no EMD signage, no call signs, no, have we agreed that there won't be even any freestanding signage? any freestanding signage?
Well, the signage we were going to put on the building, and we had a thousand, a hundred square feet per floor.
And that sign will not be an EMD sign, right? If it was up to me, I would probably strong-arm you into saying it won't even be a lighted sign, but okay. Anything else? I don't think anybody signed up to speak on this.
Well, I have a, I have a couple of questions. TE six and seven, screening landscape buffer shall be provided along the south property line except for access points. So I suppose the, the parking lot islands there is the landscape buffer.
Mm-hmm.
But the, the 15-foot setback from the south boundary, is that a, is that, is that a building setback?
That's a building setback.
Or a landscape buffer? Because that's in the park, I mean, that's.
15 is a building.
A building setback. Okay, so that parking can occur in that buffer. Okay.
Are, are you limiting the signage to certain faces of the building?
Well, we're looking on the east side of the building, on the east corner of the building is what we're envisioning.
So east and north?
East and north, yes.
Are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Good catch. Are we ready for a motion? I don't think anyone signed up to speak. Was there anybody who wanted to be heard?
Well, I guess I'll make an attempt here. I move to recommend approval of SPUD 1174 with the following revisions on eliminating TE two. Is that correct with the, the others here? On TE three, setting a limit of 10:00 PM while allowing the patio to be on the west side. Number four, TE number four, limiting the drinking establishment use.
Can we just say we're not making any, any determination as to where the patio will go? We're not limiting the placement of the patio. We're just limiting the hours of operation.
Sounds good to me.
I like that. Thank you.
Okay, TE three, not limiting the location, but limiting the time to 10:00 PM. TE four, limiting the amount of building area to 4,000 square feet for drinking establishment use. And I think that's it. From this one? Restricting within EMDs that attached signs shall be limited to the north and east faces of, of the building. There you go. Okay, is that, adding that, like second, my recommendation.
Our motion is second to approve item number 11 with the restrictions and additions. As read, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is an application to rezone 1110 Northwest 79th Street from R1 to SPOD
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Fallon Brooks, 1605 North Class Boulevard.
And tell us what it is that you're doing here.
We're taking two lots that are adjacent to two, that is, that are both adjacent to two easements. One has a sewer line in it, one has a gas line in it. And they previously have been undeveloped because they're real tight, so we wanted to change some setbacks and also allow for some detached units to go on the two lots.
Let me, let me ask before we go any further. Is there anybody here who today, I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone here today who wants to be heard on this item? How this is going to go? Okay, well, I'll, I'll hold you in reserve then. And this is, this is a difficult piece of property, and I'll refer to it that way. It's actually two lots. It, it reads visually like one big lot, but it has easements that sort of plague it, if you will, and a sewer line easement, and also a gas line easement, that have, that have just simply, has it ever been developed? I don't think so.
I believe so, no.
And it's, it's just a problem. The developer has come in and tackled it wholeheartedly. He's come up with some possible infill development for the site, which I think actually would be a good thing for the neighborhood. The staff report is a little bit perhaps misleading in the sense that it refers in more than one place to there being two single-family homes and two garage apartments. I don't think, in fact, that's really what they're wanting to limit themselves to. I think they're wanting to limit themselves to four single-family residential units on two lots. Whether one of those will be a garage apartment or not a garage apartment, I think is a little, still subject to the design process, given that they're working around and dealing with the, the easements that are in place. Those will most likely be addressed by permeable paving and providing driveway access and so on, because they can't be built over, obviously. But, but whether, whether this will be, you know, from the street, they will appear to be two single-family residences is, is the goal. But what's behind them, whether that is something that's built over a garage or not, something that's built over a garage remains to be seen, I think, at this point. And I'm okay with that. It's four individual units on two lots. That's really kind of all we need to know about that, I think.
I think you summed it up.
Now, did you want to say something? Even to say that much, you have to come forward and give me your name. I will say, the developer has met with the neighbors more than one time.
Correct.
And has gotten some feedback and has been responsive to that feedback, I believe.
Great. My name's Mark Wymer, and myself and Stephanie Wymer own a house at 1125 Northwest 79th. And from my understanding, most of those homes, a substantial number anyway, are rental properties, as ours is. And the neighborhood, I'm familiar with the neighborhood. It's stayed about the same, and I would say even declined in the last 20 years. And so I would be appreciative of anyone coming in and doing something like this. I really like the design of the garage apartments and the separate units like that. But I think that this is a, a street that really needs refreshed. And so I think it will help the property values.
Thank you. I actually agree with that assessment. The, the principal point of concern with respect to the development by another property owner in the area also, not a resident of the area, but an owner of property in the area, was that it might somehow encourage commercial development on Western and, and invasion, if you will, of the, or, or like apartment development on Western and an invasion of the single-family residential. I don't have that feel for this. I think this is a well-located piece of neighborhood. It's probably sort of underdeveloped at this point, and that, that this will help it, if anything. So I'm in favor of it, but of course I cannot make any kind of emotion, so. We have any questions of our applicant?
I do see that there, there was a, included some protests, but apparently we don't have any of the protesters here today.
Yeah, I, I think most of these people have had their questions and concerns answered and addressed.
So everything was addressed?
Yeah, we had a couple of meetings, and ultimately they agreed to allow us to move forward because we've shown some.
I, I do have one question. With Exhibit B, it looks like the paving for the two parcels, but so is there cross-access?
There's a fence in between there. It is, yeah, which I think was in the language. Are you, you're talking about between the two parcels where there's paving?
Yeah, where that exists.
Yeah, they're not really connected. There's a fence there. It's more for turnaround to get in and out of that garage unit. So that, that was a lot of confusion over that.
One, I guess one little thing I would like to clear up with you, if I can find it now. Yeah, with respect to site-proof screening, it, it talks in here about a four-foot fence that's not site-proof, and chain-link fence, and that's not site-proof either, and would not be in any way, shape, or form considered site-proof screening. So I'd like to have that removed. Six feet at minimum.
Okay.
And no chain-link, so. Otherwise, I think, you know, mostly, there, there were a lot of, there's a lot of discussion and no conclusion about the design of the structures and what they would look like and all that kind of stuff. That's not really part of what I think our considerations are here today, so.
Does it drive over the sewer? It's okay. I mean, as long as the resident didn't mind them tearing it up. As long as we don't restrict access to it.
Permeable, yeah. They're going to do permeable paving, you know, all that kind of stuff, so. And they, and they're still, still dealing with that.
Yeah, we've not been able to get ahold of ONG, ONG on the, they originally wrote a protest letter. The part, those, those are swapped. The gas line's actually on track two.
Submit a one call.
I think I did that site plan very late at night.
Submit a one call to Okie One.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Submit a one call to Okie One, and I bet they'll.
Uh, no, Oklahoma Natural Gas had written a letter protesting, they didn't, but they weren't real clear on what it was that they were protesting. Ultimately, we're allowed to pave over it, but not build on it.
Yeah.
But they have been unresponsive, so.
Well.
Good luck with that.
I, I agree with Janice. I have no problem with that. I think it's appropriate density. I didn't, I didn't jot any notes on this, because I don't think I heard any changes to this PUD.
Just the site-proof screening?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think it meets the.
Is there a language change?
The requirement of site-proof screening. I'm just going to rely on you to change the master design statement that comes to that, so.
Okay, well, I mean, in that case, I'm, I'll make a recommendation to, recommend approval on SPUD 1178. Take it.
I have a motion second to approve item number 12. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 13 is an application to rezone 7916 Southwestern Avenue from C3 Commercial to SPOD 1191.
Do we need to take a break? Does anybody else feel the need to get up? Are we going to just plow ahead?
Do you need a break?
Um, yeah, I think I do. Well, we're going to take five minutes. I'm sorry.
Sure.
A quick five.
Lady that it is, they, is the president of the association for the condominium that is, that is on the. Lady that is the president of the association for the condominium that is on the north... North of the I1 property, that she has a wood fence currently, and we were going to replace that with a concrete precast fence. Her concern was that the homeless people were knocking it down quite often.
Right, and you'd agree to do it. I just want to make sure, is that going to get written back in?
Yes, sir. Not the north end, not the... If you're talking about the east end of the I1, that part is a creek.
No, just the north in between where the subject area, the area that's before us, in between the... It's labeled condominiums there on the exhibit that's on the screen.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where we wanted the precast concrete wall, is that correct?
Yes.
Eight feet in height?
Yes.
Yeah. And... Yeah, so, okay, we're good on that.
Yeah, we're good on that.
This is an item that we've heard previously, and I think there was quite a lot of discussion about it. Is everybody clear and okay with where we are on this?
Not really. But, I mean, I just... We'd asked, you know, traffic staff for information about accidents here. I still feel like we're missing an opportunity to sort of right a wrong, and we're letting it go by, and I think this is going to get worse, not better. But, you know, I defer to the, you know, the ward commissioner on this in terms of whether or not it's a fight worth having, but we continued it for a month so we could gather information. No information was given to us, candidly, so, which frustrates me, just so we're clear. And about accidents and other things, and now we're going to have an extra curb cut with more vehicular access going through the same thing that's causing problems right now.
Are we actually taking one cut out of it?
No, not an extra curb cut, taking one away.
We're taking one away from the 7916, has two curb cuts currently right next to each other, and I'm...
The daycare?
Yes, sir.
What is now a daycare?
Yes, sir, and but even the daycare, you know, has quite a bit of traffic, especially, you know... You know, when they were open, they had over 100, 150 kids in there.
Yeah.
But we're taking one away, we're taking one out, and the property to the north of it is a totally different ownership, and we are allowing, you know, although I own part of that ownership, so, you know, we are allowing inner connectivity so, you know, so be able to... People who come into the Scooters to turn right, you know, or any other people that are leasing in the I1 to be able to turn into the other shopping centers and perhaps, you know, stop by and eat lunch, dinner, or shop, and, you know... I understand your concern about the accident, but I think the accident would happen if they turned left, not turning right. And especially when you have a light there that allows turn left, I think majority of the... Almost everybody's going to wait to use the light rather than just wanting to turn left off of the shopping center.
During our pre-meeting, our staff briefing, we did have a little bit of discussion about...
Thank you. During our pre-meeting, we did have a little bit of discussion about the traffic issue. Did you get the information you felt like you needed?
The... I was curious about the number of accidents, and the information that I got, I don't think is complete. I think there was a lot more wrecks that happened along Western than two in a year at that intersection. I think the cross-access between the new Scooters Coffee into the shopping center that doesn't get you out on Western is a good idea. I think closing the north curb cut at the Scooters Coffee to just have that curb cut that aligns with Straka Terrace at the signalized intersection is a good idea. I'd prefer they closed the south curb cut in the shopping center, but that's two completely separate pieces of property, and probably not a whole lot of people use that one, and now that they have an access to a signalized intersection, it's going to drive them to that as well. One of my concerns was, and we got rid of the uses that were my concern, was the semi-truck traffic that wouldn't fit back there and wouldn't do well coming in and out onto Western. So, my traffic concerns remain the same. This is a crazy part of Western right here with multiple restaurants and multiple banks and entrances and lots and lots of wrecks. That's the way I go home every day. I've seen two in the last two weeks. But what Mr. Gani Abadi has done to alleviate this, in my opinion, is okay.
The most we can ask of him.
Sure, and if it were all tied together as one giant piece of property, which it's not, then, you know, and he's going to allow access in between the two buildings back to the new I1 area, and it's going to be okay.
And one other thing I wanted to say is that, in the past, this property in the back has been used by the homeless people on several occasions. They use it as their home, and they congregate back there, and had caused a lot of trouble for the neighborhood, for us. And to develop this property, it's really important for that area to get these people to leave. And, you know, by you guys really considering this use and allowing this to happen, it would help the area tremendously and would run those people off. And the neighborhood would really, you know, would benefit from it because the homeless peoples are, you know, they have tents back there, they stay there 24/7, they come out on the 240 and Western, and they panhandle. It's just a really bad use for that land, and to just develop it and make something out of it, and, you know, and it's really just the benefit of the neighborhood.
I agree. This is a great project for this part of the world. My only concern, and I think Commissioner Craven's concern, was the amount of traffic we're going to be dumping out onto Western. I don't have any problems since you've deleted the use units that were listed for back there. No heavy truck sales, no gasoline sales. That's... I mean, I've seen some of the other industrial parks that you've built, 119th and Western, that's behind the auto parts store there, that's great. That's a perfect place for heat and air people that, you know, want... They have three trucks and 10 employees, and a perfect place for, you know, a retail shopper or something, but not heavy truck sales, not semi-trucks coming in and out of there all day long, so.
Absolutely.
What you're doing back here is a benefit to this part of the world, absolutely, because this is a very blighted... The area is not blighted, that certain piece of property is blighted. It hasn't been attended to for years, and so, thank you for that. But, like I said, my concern was the traffic, so.
I appreciate it.
I do have someone signed up to speak on this topic. I assume she's come to remind us about the wall?
He already mentioned it, it was the wall, but, yeah.
Give us your name and address for the record.
Talitha Falconer, 840 240 Place. I'm the HOA president of 240 Place Association.
Well, thanks for your diligence. I know it's not easy to come down here and do that, but I'm glad you came to remind us. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. Is there anybody else who wanted to be heard?
I just kind of want to talk about this intersection. It's the city's responsibility for the... To update the signal at the time. Yeah, because it's not going to... I mean, the ADA and then, you know, just crosswalks and that type of thing. I know most of it is probably dealt with, you know, under code, but just saying there's going to be a brand-new, you know, entry to this intersection, and are the lights going to be, you know, driving with that intersection and, you know, know to protect the glass?
Oh, your question is whose responsibility is that?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, it's definitely going to fall to the city to do, so. Commissioners, do we have any other questions of our applicant? If not, I will take a motion.
I'll move approval of Spud 1191 with the verbiage about the eight-foot-tall retaining wall put back in.
And the installation of the eight-foot precast concrete wall to separate the north end of the property under 9.4.
Yes.
And then, were we going to add a T E?
Oh, yeah, the right turn only sign.
Right turn only?
The right turn only sign at the south entrance of the shopping center.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second, to have... Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Heisman? It is approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for...
Item 14 is an application to rezone 901 Southwest 50th Street from O2 to C3.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, seeking to rezone this site from O2 to C3. The commercial is the predominant use of that area up and down Western. Staff does recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? Do I have comments, questions?
The staff report mentions C3 and moving the C3 to C1. Is there... What are your thoughts on that?
No, I mean, part of what we need is retail. So, C1 is so limited that, I mean, frankly, lacks much relevance, I think, because it eliminates all the things that you would want for a commercial because it's trying to eliminate everything that generates traffic. Where you typically see C1 are kind of commercial, mini-commercial districts in the interior of a residential area, not along arterials.
I'll take a motion.
Trying to organize myself up here a little bit. So, I recommend... I will make a recommendation for approval on PC 10645.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 14. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 15 is an application to rezone 7201 Northwest, 150th Street, from AA to PUD 1793.
Good afternoon, Brad Reeves of Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard. Here on behalf of the applicant. What we have here is an 11-acre tract with... PUD with... It's basically the R1's standard zoning with some limitations on the lot size. It basically makes it a 4,000-square-foot lot, 40-foot frontage. The other modifications are a 20-foot front yard setback, and then we've added a facade requirement in there. The... There's two TEs on this. It's that we add a stub to the east. We're fine with that. And then there's another one that we eliminate two lots, and you can see them here, here and here. We're fine with that as well. So, that gives us 67 lots on this. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, you accept both TEs as are written?
Yep.
So, refresh my memory just a little bit. The elimination of the lots was going to improve access to the...
We had a center common area here. It was 3.33 acres. When we were laying this out, we thought we were going to have a kind of a wider space. We thought it was going to be closer to 20 feet. It ended up being closer to eight, so it became a little small. So, it just makes it where this large common area runs through all the way through the middle. So, it eliminates this lot and this lot.
Is that common area just to meet the subdivision regulation?
Yeah, so it's a recreational common area, but yeah, that's the requirement.
Although it doesn't quite meet it, does it?
If we eliminate the two lots, we will.
Okay.
It doesn't make a lot of sense, though, either.
How wide is it?
It's 53 feet.
Oh, I thought you said 8 feet. 53 feet makes more sense.
Yeah, so we had eight foot of basically a walkway that we didn't... We thought we were going to have a little more, and it got a little tight when we activated in there. So, yeah, it's 50... Yeah, 58, 53 feet by 460, so.
And then, privacy fences will be allowed?
Yes.
So, I mean, 50 feet, I mean, it's not that wide, but...
It's open on both sides.
You're going to have a, basically, just kind of a cattle chute down the center there?
Right. I just think, I mean, in my opinion, it would be better to have bigger backyards.
Regarding this conversation, hasn't there been... I don't know if your applicant is doing this, but I know that, I think Ideal Homes has done some setups like this where it basically becomes kind of more of a pedestrian street in between houses at the back of the lot?
Yes. And that's, I mean, I'm not sure that... So, this is actually a developer. This isn't that ideal, it's an end user on that one. But I think that's basically kind of what we get. It's a walking path, you know, we have city sidewalks, and so you get out, but you can go through the middle and have the, you know, that through there.
Yeah. I would just say that, like, based on...
Well, yeah, is it going to be a sidewalk, or is it just grass?
So, currently, there's nothing in the PUD that stipulates anything on there. I think they'll have a recreational amenity of some sorts. I'm not sure exactly what it is, and it's a developer.
I mean...
It could be something of that nature. You know, you have the new park requirements set forth by the city, so, something with those.
It's just, it's been my perception of this type of thing as definitely a good, generally, because...
I just have more experience with common areas than I care to have.
Yeah.
That's the only reason, I'm just kind of curious. You know, a common area like this with a sidewalk through it makes total sense, but just a piece of grass that you've got to mow every other week?
Yeah, like I said, I imagine, and I don't want to speak for them in the end, for the end user, but I imagine there'll be some sort of amenity through there, which will have a walking path to get to there.
Right, that's all I was trying to get to.
I believe that's the intent. But the developer is not going to put that in.
So, the end user would be the probably one home buyer, or one home builder, I think is going to be the end user. But, and I'm not sure what their stipulations are on if the developer puts it in versus them at the end, but...
This is just as simple as you meeting the open space.
It is. It's a recreational common area.
Yeah, no, and I think if, you know, if I had my, you know, my brothers, I'd just... I think you even suggested it. I would just rather see this thing go away in their big backyard because it's silly, but at the end of the day, they've got to have it, right?
They have to have some open space requirement.
So... Well, my point was, I've seen it implemented in a way that's not silly. Like, I can see a benefit here. Right.
I think what's being done with this one is, you know, minimal at best, and, you know, it's... Jay, is there no requirement at all for amenity in the common area?
Yes, I think they'll be required to provide some type of recreational amenity within that common area.
And those are set forth with your new... It's the park impact fees set forth a lot of those, and so, walking trails, gazebos, hot lots, things like that. This is a fairly small development, though, so, you know, the level of what this probably will be, it's, you know, again, 67 homes, so.
Well, no, I think there's things that can be done to make it usable space.
And I think that's the intention, is that there is some usable space there, and there's some things that we can do there, but I don't have it nailed down what the plan is.
Well, I guess the question, and maybe what I'm not clear on. So, we're defining it as common area right now, but we're not defining it further. At a further stage, they'll be required to define it?
Yeah.
So...
And it'll call for language, like, you know, the property owners are responsible for maintenance? Yada, yada, yada.
And we put that on all of our final plots, that that is the case, yes.
So, our expectation up here can be, it's going to be defined, and it will be figured out. We're just not defining it today. And I guess an approval would say, we're okay with that.
I'm not...
I'm just trying to get an understanding of what that means.
I think that's accurate. I think that's an accurate statement of where we are. I'm not crazy about this, I'll just tell you. It seems to me like, you know, a density that is problematic in a number of ways. The fact that it's being sort of... I am glad that you're agreeing to the elimination of the two lots. I'm glad that it gets you where you need to go in terms of actually meeting your common area requirement, but it just in every way, shape, and form seems to me to be sort of the absolute bare minimum that can be required, and in fact, in some places, it's not even quite meeting those requirements. And I, it's just, you know, I...
Yeah, 50 feet. I mean, is there any way to squeeze everything in? Put the... Take that 50 foot, push it to the outside, do a 25-foot green belt walking trail around the perimeter of the project?
So, we wouldn't be... The north and south would be the problem on that one, because we wouldn't be pushing in. We'd be pushing in the other way on those.
Yeah, I just... I vision this 50-foot chute, people's privacy fences. You're not going to be able to see into that space from the backyards of those homes, so I think you're really kind of creating a nuisance. And if you put a sidewalk down the center of it, then you divide the space... the center of it, then you divide the space up for open rec. So, I don't know, I just, it's, it's weird.
I agree that it's weird. I think it's also a byproduct of, I mean, they are within confines of what they can do, and so there's an idealism to what we'd like to do and a realism to what they can do and are going to do with this type of product. If you, I mean, we're jumping to the next application, but it's pretty clear from these notes that it's going to fall on the Property Owners Association to decide what to do at this 50 feet. So, until it's built out, it'll be the builder who decides, right, or the developer who decides. So, the answer really is, there's not going to be anything going on, so...
Right, and that's where I'm coming from. My HOA and deal with the, the common areas, and it's a huge pain in the butt to, you know, just to maintain it and who's fighting over, you know, my backyard's got 5-foot weeds and, you know, but...
Yeah, and I think that's the same. You know, if we, if we looked at another more traditional, you know, corner or something that we, you know, see in some other, we'd have the same problem, the same concerns. We'd have grass, who's maintaining these things? This isn't, you know, it's, it's, it was a single house on 11 acres. It was a, you know, kind of an odd piece in there. It's, this is a, basically, it's a patio home addition. It's an R1ZL without the, the zero lot line ability, basically. So, there's some constraints that we had set forth, and this is what we came up with.
Well, I, I will, I guess, re-say that I, I've seen this executed well. I don't have a problem with it. I think if, you know, if buyers have a problem with it, then they'll, you know, they'll exercise that, that issue with it by not buying there. And so, if, if they don't do a good job as developer of making this an attractive space, I think it's going to impact their ability to sell units.
Then it's going to sit there and be a mess. I just don't think this is good planning, frankly. I just don't.
Well, I, I don't remember, and maybe I'm incorrect on this, how, how many times we've forced a developer to define what happens on their common area? Because I feel like we get these a lot, and a lot of times, we just say, well, they're going to do something.
Because they have a minimum requirement. They have to do something, right? That's, and, and that's my point. It's, I feel like I'm in that, you know, the movie Office Space where we're talking about the minimum amount of flair, right? Like, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about right here. They got the open space. It's not, in a, in a lot this small, it's not going to be very functional. If, if this were an 80-acre tract, they'd have a lot more flexibility. My neighborhood's got this great 20-acre tract on the north side that was supposed to be camping lots. You'd be surprised to know it never got done, right? And now it's on the HOA to develop, which is the problem with requiring these really crazy amenities, is that you have a walking trail, like the one around my lake that you can't ride a bike on, you're going to, you'll die, so...
We've got four acres, you know, developer put a park in it, put a basketball court, but it's in the middle of a retention pond. I mean, it's underwater half the time. When we looked at our house, it was in the winter time. Everything looked dry. Park was great.
Crafton Toll probably did the engineering work on that.
I don't think so.
So, my, my point is, this is in front of us on a rezoning.
In springtime.
I don't think that this is an appropriate way to develop this piece of property, so...
The, the argument would be that you, you're getting too many lots on too small a piece, and you're, 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 you know, burying...
Creating a situation where you don't have the ability to, to provide, you know, an actually usable amount of common area with, you know, decent amenities, so...
Yep. That's an argument I'll also say, I mean, you know, I, I don't want to take away from the fact that candidly, the other part of that is that this is going to create a product. What's the price point going to be here?
I don't, it's a patio home style. It's, they're smaller lots.
Yeah, this is low, this is a low price point.
Lower, yes.
So, I mean, I'm sensitive to that too. I think that's encouraging. I don't know what you, I don't know how you're going to get product like this at a single family if it's not cramped and, just because of the way construction costs are. So, it's going to create a housing product type at 150th and Rockwell and Deer Creek Schools that is very affordable. That's, that's, I mean, it is, is what it is.
Which, which to me is, is a better thing to, to hang our hat on than to be, than to stop this because of an undefined common area.
I think there's a way to address both of those issues without ending up with a product like this, so...
Well, I guess we would, you know, I'd, I'd love to hear the suggestions in that case. Because obviously, we're talking about it right now. Let's, let's figure out how to make it better if you're concerned it's not there.
This is a zoning case. I'm not going to design their development for them this afternoon while we're sitting here, but you and I should probably have that conversation.
Well, we're going to talk about the plat next, but, look, I, I mean, just see where we are here, because we're kind of, we've kind of made our point, so let's just see where everybody is. So, I'll make a motion to recommend approval on PUD 1753, subject to the technical evaluation.
Before you do that, can I ask if there's anybody else out there who wants to be heard on this topic?
Sorry about that.
Apparently not, so go ahead.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve item number 15. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is an application to, for a preliminary plat for Deer Peak Ranch, and it's located at Northwest 150th Street and west of North Rockwell Avenue.
Again, Brad, Brad Reeves of Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard. Here on behalf of the applicant. This is the accompanying preliminary plat with the, the zoning case. There are six TEs, two of which were the two that we agreed to with the PUD, which is to add a street stub to the east and then to eliminate lots 1 and 13 to have that common area come all the way through the middle. I believe the rest are just boilerplate TEs, so we agree with those. Number 3 requires a variance. We're agreeing with that, so we can strike.
I'm sorry. Brad, real quick, we don't need 3 because you've agreed to the street stub.
Yes.
And the variance for 3.
Yes.
And all the other ones you're in agreement with?
Yes.
I'd just point out, since we were talking about it a minute ago, it says, "The developer's proposing 69 single-family lots and one common area on 11.23 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 6.14 dwelling units." It goes on to say that the, find it, I had it, indicates that the sidewalks, common areas, islands, and medians are the responsibility of the Property Owners Association, and that trees are required to be planted in front yards, blah, blah, blah. But Property Owners Association is going to be responsible for the plat, so...
I also note that the, that the 6th of the TEs indicates that the developer will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk along all the common areas, so...
So, that's within the right of way. So, it's the same thing we always have. So, basically, along, what happens is, is that the homeowner, the home builder builds the sidewalk for any house, but if there's a common area there, then no one builds it, basically. So, we build it at a time of construction with our paving plans. So, it's along, say, you know, it'd be along here and here for the 53 feet. We would have to build that with our paving plan.
It's not a commitment to build a sidewalk through the common area.
True, it is not.
Okay. Just to be clear. Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on this item? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to approve C 7139.
Second. I have a motion second to approve item number 16. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 17 is an application to rezone 3501 Northeast 10th Street from PUD 1631 to PUD 1749.
Commissioners, staff, my name is D.W. Converse. I'm here representing a client. What we're basically trying to do here is to take existing PUD, rezone a couple tracks of land so that we can bring in a mobile home, we can have a family farm. That's it in a nutshell. I'm here to answer any questions.
You want to, this application is about a family farm?
It's about having agricultural use on zone, track 3.
Okay.
It'll be a family farm, yes.
We're talking about item 17?
Item 17, yes.
Okay. Well, I think we've got a little bit more to talk about than that. I, I think there's a little more to it than, than just adding a farm.
Okay, well, let's, 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 let's talk about that.
Okay. I'll let you start.
Okay, well, I have several questions. One, the discussion that I had with the developers was not about having a family farm. It was about them wanting to grow corn and pumpkins for, to have a maze? It was, it was about an entertainment venue. That's one issue. Then the next issue, which all of these people are here to hear about, is what you're going to do to mitigate the noise and traffic and parking issues as a result of operating the concert venue. So, I, I think you all know the substantive issues that we're here to discuss. Can we please just address them at the onset so we can keep, keep this meeting moving forward?
Okay. Well, that, the PUD is, is for two items, to be clear, is about changing track 6 to allow a resident R1 use, and then track 3 to have an agricultural use. And to have corn and pumpkins for their venues, as we talked about, to do their fall festival and their haunted, well, haunted forest.
I guess I should...
So, you're prepared to limit it to only the agricultural use only?
No, we're just adding that use to the uses that we're doing.
Come on. I, I should have asked for this existing 1631, but what are the uses in that one currently? Are there...
Those, those uses are not included. I think it, where was it in the report?
What I mean, are the entertainment uses already included in the new one?
The entertainment uses are already...
Already in there?
Yeah, those are already in there.
They're already there. We're not, we're not asking to exclude any of that or change any of that. We're asking to do two things, to make track 6 able to have a resident R1 zoning, and then to add agricultural use to track 3.
Okay, well...
That's what the PUD is requesting.
Right, but, but again, we, as I just explained, it's about more than that because it's about your ability to be a good neighbor. So, if you haven't been faithful to the agreements in place and the uses you've had before, why should we give you more rights to do more, more things that you don't currently have? That's, that's the point. So, I, I feel like you're, you're avoiding what the real issues are. But that's okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and keep moving forward. The first thing is about the residential use on track 6.
Before, before you do that, you've been doing this long enough to know that we don't have a process in place that permits you to come in and amend a PUD by just keeping everything in place. We're just adding something, and that's all there is. You're here asking us for a PUD. Yes, you want to keep all the uses you already have, and you're wanting to add to them, but what's on the table in front of us is the whole thing. You understand that?
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm understanding, Commissioner.
Okay. Go ahead.
Let's talk about the track 6. That is just for R1 zoning, correct?
Yes.
And just for clarification, and this is something that, that Councilwoman Nice and I specifically discussed. This would not allow mobile home use of any kind. Is that correct?
We're going to, we're going to construct a manufactured home, yes.
So, you, it would allow, would you be open to an amendment to prevent the create, to prevent allowing that, those mobile home uses?
I think I need to let my client...
A no to answer that, or?
I'll, I'll let my client address that question for you, because I don't think they're, you need to hear it from them, not from me.
Okay.
Okay?
While they're addressing that and we're talking about it, the, one of the other things that was failed to be mentioned that is a change according to our report is that the architectural regulations are seeking to be amended from 70% brick veneer, rock and stone to 50% brick veneer, rock and stone. Just a point of clarity.
So, Garrett Skeen and Roger Skeen, the track 6 is 6.6 acres. How the ordinance for deeds in Oklahoma City is anything over 5 acres can't allow for a mobile home.
I'm aware of that. My question was about whether or not you will amend your P, are you, you are open to amending your PUD to prevent allowing mobile homes on track 6. That is my question.
No, sir.
Okay. That's a deal breaker for me. So, our next que, our next issue is...
It will just, it will just be one.
We would, we would amend it to say we would just allow one on that 6.24 acres.
And where track 6 is, it's all trees? You can't even tell? You wouldn't be able to tell it's there?
Okay. My next question is about another issue that we discussed in the meetings, and two, and I, I want to be clear about this. We've had several meetings. There's been one community meeting in which we specifically requested that the applicants not attend, so I don't want to say something negative about them not coming, because that was not the case. And then they hosted another community meeting where we had more people in to address their concerns directly, and I appreciate you all doing that. During those discussions, and please stop me if I'm, if I misunderstood, I, my understanding was that your intention was to have, grow corn and have pumpkins for some maze that you were going to?
It's a haunted, it's an outdoor haunted forest put on during the month of October.
And so, one of the things that...
The month of October.
Gotcha. And so, one of the things that Councilwoman Nice, and I think, just not to rehash that entire discussion, I think that there were some specific concerns brought from neighbors regarding the growing of marijuana, regarding the growing of hemp. There are concerns about those things very specifically, and so, in response to those specifically stated concerns, we'd like to limit the vegetation to just the corn and the pumpkins. Are you okay with that?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. Finally, finally, there has been, during the discussions that we had with neighbors, there were a number of concerns brought up about the flow of traffic, about parking, et cetera. One of the other suggestions from Councilwoman Nice was about, are you willing to create some sort of traffic circulation plan for future events? Some way that we can mitigate the issues, again, that were, were stated repeatedly during that meeting and during our discussions? Are you amenable to that?
So, we had one event that we were told 4,000 people were going to come up to. 18,000 people showed up. No one knew that was going to happen. We have the ability to park thousands and thousands of cars with our river lease on the Canadian River. We cannot keep property owners within the neighborhood holding up signs and saying, "Park here," and charging for parking, which, I met one of the gentlemen that did do that. That has nothing to do with us. That's a code enforcement issue.
My question was, are you amenable to, to requiring or having a traffic or, and parking circulation plan for future events? That was my question. I, I understand that's a, I understand that that's a complex request.
I'm not sure what that means. We go, yes, yes, we could do that. Because we already go to city services for all of our event, and we, we address all parking, all, all of those.
Because, and, and I understand that it's complex. We obviously can't prevent a neighbor from deciding that they want to allow people to park, you know, on their property. I, I understand that. I don't expect you to be able to resolve that. But the issue is that, and as we discussed in our numerous conversations, being proactive about understanding that we have a problem and saying, "We're going to make an effort to mitigate the damage that's going on within the neighborhood itself." And so, taking a proactive stance versus a reactive stance, knowing that you'd like to be able to continue to have concerts there without there being an issue with the neighbors.
And then, we've brought it up in that particular meeting and other meetings we've had. What is it that everybody wants us to do? I mean, the only thing we're getting is go away. The only thing we're getting from any of those meetings is to move off the property.
Okay.
Just, just like that, right there.
So, I...
So, you know, I, I mean, we, we own the property. We're trying to figure out how to be good neighbors. So, help us.
So, I know that we, we had, you've heard, you've been here hearing the discussions that we just had. I'm thinking of what we were just talking about in Ward 5 about traffic flow and how that parking works and how it integrates with, and there are experts on these issues. I don't pretend to be one, but we have plenty of those people who work for the Planning Department and Development Services, et cetera, who can help us do that. department and development services, et cetera, who can help us do that. But it sounds like you are in agreement with making a commitment to have that plan be created and work with the experts to do so. So that's the point.
I think what concerns me about this application in its entirety, and I'm speaking a little out of turn because I wasn't at the neighborhood meetings, but just in looking at it and listening and reading some of the things, the complaints we got, letters we received, is, I think you actually hit the nail on the head. I think at one point this started out as a venue that catered to not the size of crowd and group that you're catering to now, and it's gotten away from you. And I think by us allowing that use to continue to expand or morph is going to do more harm than good. I can't objectively see how we could take a use like this and allow you to supplement it in any way which would encourage those events to continue, those crowds to grow. I think everything reaches a limit. I don't know if you were here earlier in the meeting, but we had a long discussion about outdoor recreation as a use unit. In my opinion, it's probably one of the most dangerous use units that we have, just in terms of the compatibility issues it creates, because what starts out as 400 people turns into 4,000 people and turns into an unexpected 18,000 people. I've actually heard of events here where people are parked all up and down Northeast 10th Street because of the number of folks that are happening, concerts. Maybe I'm a little really sensitive with little kids, but you talk about the word concert and 10 o'clock, and it's in the same sentence, and you lost me right there. You have the ability now. There's nothing we can do about it. I wouldn't approve it today. I wouldn't support it today, and I certainly can't support expanding your use in any way, especially given that I feel like, it seems to me there's, you're not being totally genuine in what you're planning to do.
Well, right now, we're just trying to build a home on Track Six and Track Three. We're trying to do a small family farm, which would ultimately maybe wind down the outdoor events, but right now...
I find that extraordinarily hard to believe.
But what track of land in Oklahoma City is good for an outdoor concert venue?
There's a lot of tracks of land that are great. Chisholm Creek in my ward is a great place for it.
And you're going to say that none of the neighbors are going to complain?
There are no neighbors. That's the point. There are not neighbors. There's an apartment complex that was built on the fringe of the development. There's entertainment venue, this is not that.
Well, the point is...
And if you'd have done your homework, you'd have known that we just had a case like this up in another part of Commissioners Ward Eight and Ward Seven about an outdoor venue that created a lot of consternation because of how it was placed on the property and how it would affect adjoining land uses. These things are always looked at independently. There's a lot of places that are appropriate for outdoor venues, but this may not be one of them. You already have it now, so again, there's nothing we can do about that.
Yes, sir.
But I'm just telling you that this is what concerns me, and obviously it's a concern because we got a lot of people that signed letters of protest, a lot, about that specific issue, so.
And again, just to be transparent with the commission too, in our discussions, one of the things that I specifically said, because I'm aware that you already have the right to have the concerts there, and I want to make sure that my friends in the audience understand that, even if this PUD does not pass today, they will still have that right. So, just so we're aware, but one of the things also that I consistently mentioned was creating an avenue on your end to be able to receive the complaints of the neighborhood so that there is a more cooperative relationship, giving them more notice of when you are going to have those concerts. Getting creative about being a good neighbor is my point, and I'm going to continue to make that point.
Okay.
Yes, sir, and I gave out my personal cell phone during that meeting to anyone that asked for it.
So, you know, it happens occasionally that we have cases before us where it is abundantly clear that many of the issues, and generally they're the ones voiced by protestors, that have attached themselves to an application, sort of predate, precede, in some sense supersede the actual application before us, and generally they have to do with being a good neighbor. We have received a tremendous amount of information from your neighbors who very clearly do not feel like the operation of your business at this location currently is beneficial to their quality of life, and boy, I get that. It generally requires both sides to move forward on something like this. Right now, I hear people saying that what they want is for you to move away, and I'll tell you with all due respect, that's really not a very good negotiating position. I hear you saying, "We can already do all these things that we can do, and all we're here to talk about is these couple little things and what's the big deal," but it is a big deal. I have not inserted myself into this, and I won't now, unless, you know, I have some indication from both sides that there's actually a path forward here. I mean, it's a simple vote to say no and let you move on to City Council, where I assume the same thing will happen. This is a nonstarter, so if there's some path forward, I'm going to need to hear that from both sides here. You first.
Well, we are willing to meet with the neighborhood, and we've already told our councilwoman that we would give them advance notice of any events that are coming up, and we met with the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. The meeting got ended early before we could actually have the chance to say, "How can we be better neighbors?"
Well, I think it's going to take, I think it's going to take more than just a willingness to meet. I think it's going to take a willingness to actually make some changes and address the issues that are raised, and, you know, I would have to really be convinced that that was an option for you to even continue this matter today, and even that, I will lay to you.
What would be some of the options?
I mean, you've met with these folks on both sides. Do you see a path forward here?
I, to be honest, I really don't. I think that the biggest issue is that it is such a disruption to the neighbors to continue to have this venue here in the first place.
Well, but as it relates to the application that we have here, I think, again, my point is that by allowing, whatever that expansion looks like, right, by allowing this to adapt and evolve and continue to grow, that it's exacerbating the problem. It's making the other uses more impactful. It's making them more year-round, and that's what, I don't, to be clear, I don't begrudge you because you were here and operated and it's just sort of grown out of what you thought it would be, but for us to allow it, it continues to stress the compatibility of the uses around you and the uses that you have and the uses that you're asking us to give you today. That's why I say I can't see adding and letting this thing continue to, the problem to compound, which is why I can't support the application today.
And we only had one event that got a little out of hand, just with the parking issues. All of our other events, other than noise, there are no parking issues.
So, and to kind of come full circle here, I will rely on your judgment in this matter. There's not a path forward for you that permits you to continue to operate with respect to the uses you already have unhindered. I mean, I think it would require you to put sort of everything on the table for negotiation, and I'm not hearing a general willingness to do that, and I'm not faulting you for it necessarily. I think it's very hard for an applicant to come forward with, you know, vested rights and say, "Sure, I'll give those up."
Well, and the uses that we currently have, we're under contract for events through 2023, so it's not like we can just say, "Hey, we're done." We cannot do that. I mean, that's our business model.
Is there things you could do to maybe mitigate the problems and maybe ease the neighbors' concerns a little bit?
When we met with the neighbors, we enclose our stage now, and we've always done that. We're going to enclose it a bit more.
Madam, please.
I'm John Arrowood, 211 North Robinson. I'm the attorney for Echo Media. What we're asking for is to put a home on the property so the owners can live there and monitor the property better. If anything, that's going to make some of these problems that are being complained about better and go away. They'll be directly on the property and be able to monitor it much better. The agricultural, having a corn maze out there is not going to bring any more people out. It's just going to be an addition to their current haunted forest that they have on the property every...
You wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't designed to attract more people to your property. You wouldn't even be doing it if that's not the point, and that's the frustrating part. That's the frustrating part about this negotiation in the first place, is that there's not a mutual respect and just candor about what you're trying to do and what the neighbors' actual concerns are and a willingness to meaningfully address them. And so to Commissioner Privet's point about enclosing the stage, these are all things I ask. I am not an expert on concerts. I am not an expert on sound mitigation, so I ask specifically, knowing that your intention of how you want to use this property, are there landscape things you can do? Are there things you can do with the design of the stage? Are there things that you can do with the placement of the stage? Are there things that you can do? I ask all of these things, and the answer repeatedly was either they're already doing it or they're not willing to do it, and yet these problems have persisted. So we're at the same, that's why we're at an impasse. If we're not going to be honest about what the actual problems are and be honest about the solutions, we're not going to get anywhere.
What have you requested that we weren't willing to do?
I just, I think I just named all of those things.
Just a couple. I think we are doing all of those things.
Exactly. So see, this is where we are.
Okay. So you're not asking for anything else?
So I can kind of get a grasp of the scale of these shows in comparison to, say, the Zoo Amphitheater. Where are we? Are we close to that?
So Zoo Amphitheater, their capacity is about 8,500. Our average concert does 3,000 people.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but that's not going to make it any less loud. I mean, you've got 3,000 people there, you're going to make a lot of noise for them to hear it.
Correct. And then for our haunted forest, where we're wanting to do the corn maze, we see about 10,000 people a year and we have zero complaints, zero traffic issues.
I wouldn't suspect, though, for that, but...
You just compared apples and oranges. You said the capacity of one was something, and your average is different. Capacity is not the same as an average. It continues to be a lack of candor. What is your capacity?
So we, outdoor venues don't really have a capacity. The Zoo Amphitheater does because they're enclosed in a fence.
I think yours has a capacity. What do you think your capacity is? 10,000, 15,000?
For the outdoor amphitheater, we could probably fit 5,000, but we've never been there before.
For fire code.
This whole, what their capacity is and their average.
Well, we're an outdoor venue, so we really don't have a capacity.
And then with regard to noise, when I ask questions about, "Can you do these things? Are these ideas, will these ideas work?" And you tell me, "We already do those ideas," and then I have neighbors who say, "And it's still too loud," and so then the response should be, "Okay, well, since that's not working, here's some other ideas that may actually work." That seems like a logical response, right?
We're not hearing any other ideas, though.
We're not hearing anything. You know, everyone's throwing things out that we don't even know what they're talking about.
All we're hearing is leave.
They're not giving us any feedback.
I think the feedback, the feedback is that your mitigation efforts are not sufficient. It's incumbent on you as an expert in operating your venue to be able to provide us, the public, with your suggested methods to make that work. Is that unreasonable, or is your view that only we are supposed to give you the ways that you're going to mitigate sound and be able to operate your business?
I think I've already said twice now that I wanted some input from you, so you can't question me on that.
Okay.
I've already told you that I wanted some feedback from you, and to this point right now, you're not giving me anything.
I am not an expert on sound mitigation, but it is, it's your job to be one because you operate a concert venue.
And we're already complying with all of City Code. So, all we're asking for today...
Was any consideration given to moving the venue to the northeast corner of Track Three?
So that would put us even closer to the neighborhood. Right now, where our stage currently is, is basically where the three is on the PUD 1631. We put it at the furthest southeast part away from the neighborhood, and when we originally went through PUD 1631...
The northeast corner.
The south, this is kind of the south, that south diagonal line right in the middle, right by the three on the 1631. The speaker's point straight to Midwest City.
In between the lines.
When we applied for PUD 1631 and we met with staff on the property, we actually wanted to put our stage where it says Track Three on that map. We wanted to put our stage about where the C is on, where it says Lost Lakes Entertainment Complex, about where the C is. Staff talked to us after the staff meetings, and we talked. We agreed to move the stage down to way further south, furthest possible south position that we could, and everybody agreed that we would build the stage right there, approximately where the number three is in PUD 1631. So it's not like we just willy-nilly went out there and just built this thing. You know, we went through the proper steps. We've been doing, we've been doing things as proper as we, with our knowledge that we could have. We put everything, and we've gone through the permitting process on everything, and we're continuing to do that at this point right here, so we can be right.
And currently, currently in PUD 1631, it includes the river property that's east of us as well. We're in a partnership with the Oklahoma City River Trust, and they, when we do events, they participate in the revenues.
Just finally, we're not asking for really anything new that's addressing the concerns of the citizens nearby. We're only asking to put a residential home out there to allow for agricultural use. Neither one of those are going to increase the problems that the neighbors are complaining about. They're not going to increase the noise, traffic, light, any of those things.
So as I've explained previously, to limit what it is you're asking for does not shield you from the concerns that have preceded you here by your neighbors in the operation of the facility currently. You're having to renew the PUD in its totality as well as add those things, and I think, you know, what you're hearing today is pretty clear indication that you're not likely to succeed with that today, so the question is...
And I would just reiterate that my opposition to your application is specifically about the fact that I think that allowing a permanent onsite resident and additional amenities that you can use at other seasons exacerbates a problem that we don't want to allow to expand. That's precisely why I don't support it.
So, we have an awful lot of people here who would like to be heard on this topic. I'm not sure it's entirely necessary for us to hear from everybody that's here and wants to speak, but that's what we're here for. So if you feel the need at this point to come forward and let us hear from you specifically...
Who, huh? You, come on.
Let me, excuse me, let me go through these list of names, and you can tell me whether you want to be heard or whether you'll defer your time to someone else. You're going to be heard no matter what, huh? Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Powers.
I think they might be our spokesperson here, right? Are you, I might be a spokesperson.
Hi, Dana Brockway with the NAACP. I'm just going to dance with you guys for a minute. This is what your residents hear. And then there's a plethora of nice curse words that go with it. So if I play the curse words for you, that's what your residents hear. If you take the time, Garrett and Roger, take the time to look at the people that are here.
Would you speak to us, please, and not to the applicants?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
But if you take the time to look at the people that are here, that's not their genre, and what we're finding is, is that there's not a transparency here. There is an absolute deception. Every time they hear the conversation, it changes, and that's what's making it, for them, a moment of disrespect. When you have residents that have been there for 60 years, their notices didn't even come on time. The first meeting was two people, but obviously more than two are here. The second meeting, six people. Obviously, there's still more than here. When we started meeting the pavement for the petition, that's when those residents were made aware. There's an issue with that. If you're going to be transparent, then be transparent. They're not saying go because they don't want any development or beautification. They're saying go because you entered into a contract deceitfully, and once you enter in that way, if your introduction is flawed, there's no way to change the mathematics with it. They're asking, "What can you do?" We have absolutely no problem with sitting down and having a conversation that ends with results, not a conversation to where we have to constantly be in a hamster wheel of disillusion and deceit. When you have people that have been in a community that was only available at the beginning to minorities, that's where they were pushed to, that's where they were forgotten, and when you have it when you now into an influx of traffic and they can't get out of their homes, it's disrespectful and it's deceitful. When you have an influx of people that are not being heard, and then it seems like there's an ulterior motive for the financial benefit of the developer, that is deceitful, and it's not acceptable. You have a community of people here. They want to know what they can do. Then all you had to do was send out notices in a proper time. All you had to do was come knock on the doors, the same doors that we beat down and knocked on and said, "Hey, are you aware that this is a development that's happening?" And not one of them could say yes. That is deceitful. If you want to build a community relationship, if you want to be a good neighbor, that can easily be done, and that's not what's been done. We aren't looking for adversarial moments all the time. We aren't looking for adversarial moments all the time. We know that progress has to happen. We know that they have a venue that's going to happen anyway. It doesn't need to happen with the guise of, oh, it got out of control one time. Because as you hear the people come and speak, it wasn't one time. When people make a point to start signing petitions, to start making their voice heard, common sense application would say, listen. That's all you have to do, is pay attention. If you want to know what you can do, the first step was to listen, and that was not what's done. And here, you will hear the people step to the podium, and they will make themselves known. And each time, they will make their concern known. And by a common sense application, if you listen, the answer is there. Thank you, Madam Powers.
Thank you. So, are there other people who specifically wish to be heard, or shall I just start through my list?
You got your list?
I got my list. I can't read the first name on it, though. I have to say, it's something Ellis. Someone named Ellis, a first name I can't read. Thad, something, it looks like T, something Ellis. No? Galen Pruitt?
Charlie Gaddis.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gaddis.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
No problem. I didn't know if you were reading all the way through the list...
No, 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 no.
...for us to line up, or if you...
No, no, no.
All right? No problem. Thank you all for your time today. I am a long-term resident of this particular area since I was ten years old. I am now fifty-five, fifty-six years old. And for, for the longest, I, there have been a lot of things that's there. And I guess I'm trying to choose my words carefully here, because I think a lot has already been said. I'm not against anything that's going to make the community better. I, I fight for changes all the time, and so I, I see this as being something that could, could work. But there has to be a partnership. And as this group have already mentioned, it's not been a partnership and a cooperation on both sides. And I know that we're here to, today, just to look at Track Six. And I've heard all the other things that have already been said, but I believe that there is some, some things that's not being said. I think there's some deception going on. I appreciate Brother Pennington for, for asking the question, and that is, that if, could you just limit it to, you know, to corn and pumpkins? And, of course, it's no. And with that said, that means that there's something else under current that we are not getting to really understand. And so I think it's important, it's disappointing, as a neighbor, it's disappointing that we can't work together in order to make this work for everybody, everybody's interests. I'm not one that wants to shut everything down. I'm one to be able to come to the table and sit down and work through the process, and let's see if we can make something happen. It's not fair to, to them. They purchased this property, and I was in that same situation at the place where I serve. You can buy a piece of property, and you want to do something with it, but if you don't do your due diligence, you're going to run into some issues. And I think this is what has happened here, that we run into some issues that probably should have been handled prior to all of this. And so I appreciate your, your thought, but I, and, and, and a danger in the area is, is tremendous. Some of the elderly individuals who I've known since I was growing, since I grew up, they had to leave because we've been here since one-thirty. And many of them have to go take medication and everything. And they called me over and said, Pastor, would you make sure you let them know how dangerous it is? And for them to be at their age, and events happen, and you can't get a fire truck, emergency vehicle through that area, we're simply, is simply disrespectful to people who have purchased homes in this area and have stayed in the area. So many places in the city, people have moved and left abandoned houses where people burn them down, they live in them and all. These are individuals who are in their homes and have lived in those homes for several, several years, and have owned property. And I think that it's disrespectful when you have people come up and say, I bought some property, and I'm going to do whatever I want to do, and I don't care what you think. In the meeting, they said that there were supposed to be letters that was, that was sent out to anybody who was three hundred feet from the edge of the property. And there were almost eighty percent of the people in that room had not gotten that letter. And that is not by accident. Maybe five or six, but not eighty percent of the people in the room. That, this is not right. And I know we're not here to listen, talk about the disturbance and the noise, but you can look on here and see, there are at least three or four churches in that area who have afternoon services. And if something going on, you're going to hear it. I live at the, probably the height of that, which is right there where the Y is, right where the school is, between Sixteenth and Seventeenth. And my property sits way high, and I can still hear the bass when I lay down at night. I can only imagine the lower piece of the property that's closer to it. And then, actually, the music, the type of music even goes even further. So I, I think that, I, I, I only can speak for myself, because we have a committee in our neighborhood, but as far as I'm concerned, if there was a table that we could sit down, and everybody's going to open up their, their secret bags and expose everything, then that would give us opportunity to kind of share some thoughts. But Pennington, Pennington said, and those individuals up here said that they were going to, they want to talk. Well, apparently, we ain't been talking. And in that meeting, what happened was, is that then the neighbors started fighting against each other. And no neighborhood ought to be able to do that. People have been living next door to each other for years. It ought not be. And however you all rule, then I hope that you will take those elderly individuals who have owned their properties for years, and, and then these young people who have taken on the property that their parents have worked so hard to do, to take that in consideration as you get ready to make your decision and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I had called the name Ellis. Is that you?
How you doing?
Are you Mr. Ellis?
I'm Mr. Pruitt.
Mr. Pruitt.
That Galen, it's Garland Pruitt.
Is there someone here named Ellis? Was I unclear about what I was doing earlier? Is that why you didn't respond to me?
I think his name, his name probably is Fred Ellis. It doesn't sound...
That's close, that's close, yes. Fred, yes. Has he gone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clearing that up for me. Mr. Pruitt?
Garland Pruitt, Oklahoma City, Choctaw. The elephant in the room is the noise. I noticed that through the city council meeting, other organizations came up, and they made mentions of walls, they made mentions of sound requirements. They don't have any of those. That's part of the problem. These residents have been there thirty, fifty years. That's their home. They're not trying to go anyplace. So when we come before you all to, when they come before you today, asking for a requirement that will allow them to put a trailer home, so when we look at northeast, eastern, Amart Luther King, all the way to Yukon, does anybody on that riverfront have a trailer home? You already know the answer. These residents live in that area, and they can't put up a trailer home, and they're utilizing the water, the sewage system and everything else. They have abused their power and their position, and now they want to require and ask for something that the residents that's been there thirty, fifty years don't have. They're utilizing the city's water and such, I mean sewer lines. Power and influence is what we're looking at. They have abused their power and their position. The neighbors can't sleep. Emergency thing was a real thing. Now, if they just wanted to get up and go to a, a ballgame, or go get something to eat, on one of these particular times when they're having these particular concerts, it's a problem. They are a nuisance to the neighborhood. We're not above progress, we're not above development. We know it's going to happen. It has to happen. From there, going back that way, but we want it to be done properly, decent, and in order. It's an abuse of power and influence. We know that they have the property, but we have the vote. And so we calling on you all to make the right decision, do the right thing, and respect this neighborhood, respect these seasoned folks. In their seasoned age, they need to be able to go to sleep at night without the abuse of someone that wants to have a concert. We're asking you to make the right, make the right decision, do the right thing, and not allow this thing to expand beyond what it already is. The neighborhood needs it, the city needs it, individuals need it. It's the only thing that we call common decency and respect for someone other than self. Thank you.
My name is Kerwin James. I'm on one of those lists.
Okay.
Okay. I own, what, fourteen, sixteen lots in the area. And we've been there since nineteen sixty. Now, and like in the court of laws, a thing called precedent. We were there first. So how can someone come railroaded in second, and demanding more rights than the people that was already there first? Then, and before they even did it, where were the tests for the audio? I mean, I had a band back in the eighties, and I knew, you know, out, outdoor, about eight, nine o'clock, you shut down, because you disturbing people. That's why they got Chesapeake Arena, Civic Hall Center, they are soundproof, you can go up two hundred decibels, you're not, you're not a nuisance on anyone. Then, in this area, do they have special parking privileges, too? Because I know in our residence, if you park on grass, it's a hundred dollar ticket. So he say he can get four thousand people there. They own grass. Should the cops go through and write four thousand tickets and make them some more money? Do they get special privileges, like he said, that the residents don't get? We've been there sixty years. And the mobile homes are already on their property. They have a double-wide mobile home sitting on their property, that they want to get disapproved, and then put it right up. And, and all in this neighborhood, it's not a one mobile home in it. So they get special privileges to do what they want, while the residents have restrictions. That's why they doing all these different commercial zones. And then, my example is, like, I've been by Texas Motor Speedway. Did they just go pop by a neighborhood and put it up, and then say, oh, well, the zoning said we could do it? They went and found some area way, way out in the woods, and probably did all kind of sound buffing and all that, knowing that NASCAR makes a lot of noise, and they have no complaints. They do have a highway out, up when it gets out. But that's what you're doing by a neighborhood. Commercials, it's supposed to be commercial zones. Since when do you put a commercial zone area right next to a resident? It hadn't been one there for sixty years. Other than industrial, gout of concrete, some sand pits and all that, that doesn't bother anyone. They even had a lake thing where they're doing the ski jump. That didn't bother us, that was fine. But they snuck this little concert thing in. It's only two places in this city where you have loud outdoor concerts which have no restrictions, the Zoo Amphitheater and now this place. They, they tried it over at the South Air Park, but they shut it down. Now they building condos over there. So I don't know if y'all got enough flashback on that, that you got rid of. But I, I was going, and me and this other gym, I got twelve lot, vacant lots. I was going to improve and try to put some homes up and sell them to advance the neighborhood. But I wouldn't sell a home, and in the spring and summertime, they got to hear all that. And it's a bunch of filth. You know, you could hear the cursing and the bruffs, you know, the bad language, and, you know, kids are out playing. And so what do you say there? I mean, it's, it's a lot of disrespect, that's the word. And who in any place, if this was Nichols Hills, you, you think that'd be there? No way. That'd say, one year out of town. I say it should have never been, I think they snuck it in. They snuck it in, because they were just a little lake thing going around ski jumping. That was fine, we had no complaint. Then all of a sudden, these concerts started. It probably was in there, and they just hadn't set it up. Now, I had a band, like I said, if you have a backdrop and a side drop, and you, you do your landscaping where it absorbs the sound, you wouldn't have a sound. But they got a wide, just one flat concrete slab. And if you put a canvas up, a canvas don't do nothing. You have to have a engineer, by engineer, sound design in the front and the side to push sound other way. Whichever way the wind blows, that's where the sound, I'm on mostly Twenty-third Street, and I hear it loud and clear. I had to turn my fan up, TV up, not to hear it. And so, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. James. Give me your name and address for the record.
I don't know if I should say good afternoon or good evening. But my name is Bobby Thomas. My address is fourteen oh nine North Standish Avenue. I'm located between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Street. And I will have to say, my parents moved there in nineteen fifty-two. We've been there ever since. That track, we didn't have a problem when that track, when that lake was first weight boarding, and they were zip lining across the lake, I thought that was excellent. The next thing I knew, they snuck that entertainment thing in. I don't know if they did it because someone did own it before them, but they snuck that in. They didn't tell us anything about that entertainment complex. We were, we were good with the lake bo, the weight boarding. And I just don't think it's fair. We were not told what they were going to do, we were not informed. But I just want to read this to you. I would like to address the issue concerning noise control and parking in our neighborhood. Cars were blocking my driveway, and my home is located at fourteen oh nine North Standish, between Thirteenth and Fourteenth. Also, isn't there a city ordinance concerning noise from ten PM to seven o'clock AM? Therefore, Garden Community is against the noise and parking from Lost Lake. And Garden Community Association, we also are against that. That, he said it's one mobile home, it's two. One of them is in Track Six, and the other one is over, is right next to sitting at Track Three. But there's two mobile home. They don't tell the truth about things. So I just want to know, let you know that Garden Neighborhood Association, Garden Community is not satisfied with any of this. Thank you.
Good evening to you all. My name is Mary Howard. I live at thirty-eight oh one Quell Drive. I live in the Forest Park area. Forest Park area is right behind Twenty-third and Thirty-Sixth and so forth. I live in the thirty-eight hundred block. I am not against our neighbors. My church is at thirty, forty-five Northeast Sixteenth Street. My husband pastors there, and he's, the church has been there seventy-five years. We have many residents that live in the area. A lot of them are seniors, and we do have some young mothers that have small children. And I think what they would like to propose with the corn maze, and the cornfields, the pumpkin patch and all, I think it's a good idea. But I don't think that spot is the right place because of the parking. I would not take my youth department down there because there's not parking for us. Now, I know we've been invited, but it has never taken place. We've never met with them. My husband has never met with them. They have never come to our church to say, would you have any youth that want to come down and work the property? We have not been invited. Our doors are open if they want to do something more in the community, to try to see what they can do. I do know that parking is bad. Where I live, when they had their concert last year, it was so loud, it was like it was at my neighbor's house. We got in my car, I took... I took my neighbor. We drove everywhere trying to follow the sound, and we got all the way to Tenth Street. We could not get through because the police were out directing traffic. Traffic was all the way from Sooner Road, right after you cross the bridge, everywhere. All in the residence, we could not turn even to get on Standish to get back up to my church. I had to go all the way around access on I-35 to go back around the backside of my church. I think the venue is a nice idea, but they do need to have some sound buffers, something that is gonna keep the sound and push it toward the lake and back towards Sooner Road, and not that it's gonna come to the north. Because as someone already said, that's where the wind brings it. Not just that one concert, but all the concerts I hear on my street. And I think that is too far. And for us to have to stay up to hear that noise until twelve o'clock midnight on a Saturday night is not good for my resident. Not good for my whole block where we live. And I don't think for sound barriers, something has to be done as well as the times because that is not, it is not good for us. Now, I'm not, I'm seasoned, but I'm not as old as I look. Or I might be older than I look. Okay? Some of my residents are in their eighties. And they're up at night because they can't go to sleep because of the noise. And their house vibrates. And I think that is unfortunate, and I don't think it's good. And when this was asked for that property, the city council had to pass it for them to get licensed and all. Somebody didn't do some adjustments and some correct guidance or whatever. So, I'm just asking that you all do some thinking about that in the residence to keep us happy and healthy. Thank you.
Tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Mary Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Brown. I stay at forty sixteen Northeast Sixteenth, Oklahoma City. I stay right behind Lost Lake. Like, I'm on Sixteenth, and Lost Lake is here. So, all that is in my neighborhood. I wake up any given Friday morning, Saturday morning, Sunday morning, and there's music. I don't know what time they closing things down. I'm waking up to it. I'm going to sleep to it. I don't see the benefit in us having these things that they're trying to bring to our neighborhood. It's not beneficial. We don't have that many children in the neighborhood. There's not that many children in the vicinity. Because as they say, most of the people in the neighborhood, in the vicinity, are of age, retired, or their grandchildren is growing up. So, I don't know what they gonna do. I don't know nothing about no form. They say we wasn't getting no family form, and now they want mobile home. I don't need all that in my backyard. I got Lost Lake. Thank you.
I'm sorry, tell me your name again, please.
Vanessa Brown.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Gail Flynn. And you've all have heard from me because I sent in probably one of the first complaints. I've been fighting this for two years. I was diagnosed with cancer two years ago, a second time, and I'm still here. I just completed fifteen months of chemotherapy, and I'm still here. But I want to ask you guys some questions, and nobody shout me down with the answer, okay? Why is it okay for this venue to decide for me when I deserve peace and quiet? Nobody shout? Have I got an answer to that? I kind of didn't think so. This gentleman is in the business to make money. I understand that. I worked all of my life. And when my mother passed away five years ago, I moved back into that home where I know every one of these people. They spanked me. They made me go to school. And they made me complete everything I started. But this is the ultimate disrespect of my neighborhood. I love these people. We've gone through lots of things. And I came up in a time, because I'm sixty-two years old, that yes, I was the first busing student. So, I had to go to school on the other side, south side, Capitol Hill. But somehow, we managed in Oklahoma to get this right. And I came out with a good and proper education. But I just want to ask you another question. Why is it okay for someone with more means than myself to come to my neighborhood and direct when it's okay for me to have peace and quiet? I have made calls to the Oklahoma City Police. I, in fact, have written the venue tickets. I took off work and went to the courthouse to talk about those tickets, all without response. And believe it or not, I thought I was the only one complaining until I contacted my Neighborhood Association and found out that this has been years, years, that we've been disrespected like this. And so, there are things that are there. I understand that they're there. However, can you imagine going through weekly chemotherapy and then coming home and maybe listening to something until twelve midnight, one AM, and having to get up and work for the State Department of Human Services, because I still work, and get there at six-thirty AM on a Saturday morning after I've listened to that all Friday night? On top of that. So, I'm asking you, begging you, to see the humanity in me and see the humanity in my neighbors. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn.
Hello, my name is Joyce Willis. I stay at eighteen twelve North Redbud Drive. I am the Garden Neighborhood Council President. And I have come here on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, who currently opposes the PUD, the noise, the rezoning for agricultural purposes and the building of the single-family home structure. In order to represent all of the neighborhood, I must keep transparent or keep transparency as there are two people who are in the affirmative who will agree, as they did tell you, who are in the affirmative for Lost Lakes and Eco Media due to financial gain. However, the majority are in opposition of any new PUDs and the renewal of the current PUD and wish to dissolve or find some form of resolution in order to move forward. The last concert that they had was the Cannabis Fest. There was a major upheaval of the neighborhood, emergencies, noise, parking, traffic, waste, and for the entire day. And this is just not the type of events that the neighborhood would like. We do understand that they would like to make money, and we would like some form of resolution in order to move forward with them. And I piggyback what Kamal has said about, is there a traffic plan? And if so, does that traffic plan not disrupt the neighbors? And they say that, you know, they didn't know that the eighteen thousand people were going to be in the neighborhood. We don't believe that to be true as well. They parked from Bryant all the way down to Sooner, on top of the bridge, all through the neighborhood, all up Standish. There was a traffic jam from Tenth and on Twenty-third when they had the last Cannabis Fest. And this is the function where the eighteen thousand people fluctuated into the neighborhood. The other events that they have, which is the corn maze, they say that there is no, that there is not a lot of traffic, which is untrue, which they know that there is a line and that they say that they can park four thousand cars on their property, which they never do. Well, they do park cars on their property. Let me modify what I'm saying. They do park cars on their property when they are having events. But those people who participate also park along the highway or along Tenth, all along Tenth the whole time. And some of their events does make it very difficult. At least, it takes you at least ten to twenty minutes to leave your home when they are having events. We don't want them, we don't want them not to make money. We just want them, as we are saying, to be better neighbors. We just find that some of the things, we don't believe some of the things that they are saying. And we just, if they would be more transparent, that would be a better negotiable terms if they would be a little more transparent. We believe that they are tilling the soil with the pumpkins and the corn so they can later grow like something industrial, marijuana or hemp. And so, our thing is, if you are honest on forthcoming, there is a mechanism of communication. But we feel like that that is closed. I've only had a limited conversation with Mr. Garrett or, well, Garrett or Roger. And so, the Neighborhood Association has been in existence three-fourths of the time that this neighborhood has been established. And we just wish they would do better by us as neighbors because we know they're there. We know he owns the hundred and twelve acres. We just, well, he may be leasing them. But our other thing is, we'd like to, one of the other questions that we like to ask is, what is the current leasing agreement with the city and the River Trust for Lost Lakes and Eco Media LLC? And we wish to revisit the terms as it has proven to be unbeneficial for the residents of the neighborhood. We already know that the noise is ridiculous, and we just would like a better resolution than what we have currently.
I am former Oklahoma City Councilman John A. Pettis Jr. I, first of all, want to say thank you to this body for listening to the neighborhood's concerns as relates to this zoning case. PUD sixteen thirty-one is a zoning case that I deeply regret. That I deeply regret. Sixteen thirty-one has been a nightmare for the community. And that's why several years ago, I put forth to rescind PUD sixteen thirty-one. As a matter of fact, Mr. Brummet wrote the item for the council to rescind because of the complaints that you all are hearing today. So, again, I just wanted to come up to say thank you for hearing the neighbors concerned. I have been a louder voice against Lost Lakes since the first complaint that I received when I was city councilman. You see, it was at eleven-thirty at night when Ms. Flynn called me to complain about the noise. I got out of my bed and went to Ms. Flynn's house, went inside her house, and I heard the noise for myself. And I tried as the Ward Seven Councilman at that particular time to try to work with the neighborhood in them to stop it. But unfortunately, as you can see years later, here we are today. The neighborhood is still complaining about how much Lost Lakes is a nuisance to the community. So, again, thank you, Commissioner Kamal Pelletian, for your remarks and you hearing the neighbors. And thank you to all of the members of this body. Please do not make the mistake that was made in PUD sixteen thirty-one. Thank you.
I do still have a couple of people who are signed up to speak. Tell me your name.
I would just like to say, Garden Oaks Neighborhood is the oldest neighborhood in Oklahoma City. If you don't believe me, check with Neighborhood Alliance, George U. Rascal. So, we want to keep our neighborhood. We're the oldest neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an LP NAF who has signed up to speak. I'm sorry. And Jenna Hines. No? And Mr. Washington wants to be heard.
Thank you. Oh, no, we're gonna disregard this loving community here. We are philanthropists. We can basically do what we want to do. We got the money. We got the backing. We got prestige. We got political clout. To heck with you people having fifty, sixty homes in this neighborhood. Oh, no. As a matter of fact, these lovely people right here wasn't here when Michael Washington was here by himself, or was it a couple of weeks ago, when I approved of you that these people did not get in contact with those people before making this rash, irrelevant decision that they made? See how it works out? God does not confuse. God only leads those who serve Him greatly, and I happen to be one of His servants. Now, then, having said that and much, let me tell you one thing about this flagrant disregard of these people's great rights here. They're not transparent. You hear me now? Let me say that again. They are not being transparent. And you want to know why? Because if I were transparent to you, I know I wouldn't get anything approved whatsoever. If I told you about my cannabis intent. If I told you about I want a plot to move y'all out so I can bring my friends over on this side. I'll shout, "Michael, how many people coming over?" "Oh, Bob, why don't we just say over? Let's get these houses and land right here, and we ain't got to travel that far." Come on now, I see it way deeper than what everybody's laying on to. Now then, not only are they not transparent, but at the same time, you also have a business, like you said, no one is upset at anyone wanting to make money. This is a capitalist society we live in. Okay? Now, I don't have business myself. I like that one. But you cannot come in and disregard a family. These people are families. You heard the lady say she used to get spanked when she was younger by other ladies and things here. Look, come on now. But now, if you have elderly people who are on medication, who simply just want a good night's sleep, and like the lady said, getting up in the morning, we have to consider that deeply. We cannot put money over the peace of mind of the citizens who've been there long before these people even thought about coming. Matter of fact, someone wouldn't even bother with a lot of these people living here. Oh, but I don't care. I'm part of the gentrification process that this innovation district is already moving toward East Side doing anyway. Come on now, let's keep it real. It's all part of the gentrification process that's designed to remove African-Americans out of their communities so that we can come in and take over because we want East Side back like we did in the early sixties, had it. Ain't gonna play with you now, because I'm gonna keep it real at this time with me. Okay? So, that's why I'm saying to you, we're not gonna allow or tolerate any underhanded behavior, mannerism, or any kind of other sneaky attacks. Like I said, these people didn't even know about a lot of stuff that these people are already doing over here. Okay? They come in one thing saying, "We want to have a landfill of what is corn and pineapples or whatever the case is, pumpkins." Really? That's a mirage. Then, after a while, they gonna come, let's sneak in in the back door. "Oh, we need a little bit further here, more information. We need to put a marijuana crop out here." "Oh, it's legal now, isn't it?" "We can also put us a dispensary out here." Come on, man. Do you know how many people right now? There are not a lot of young people who live in those neighborhoods like these people just mentioned. You want to know why? Because the police have moved them out. Them young people have. But now, he want to bring them back in by bringing eighteen, what is it, eighteen thousand, they say? People back up. Let me send closing. I'm getting ready to go. But I love having fun. I love having fun. I speak for the people. They don't need them to speak for me. You don't have to say I'm their representative. I represent humanity. I'm a chosen servant of God. I don't care if your child, your mother, or your sister live in my neighborhood. If you say, "Michael Washington, go down and speak with me, look out." You know, I come and gas that bus up, and I think all these people know that. I'll start a meeting, I have a great time. Thank you. Disregard this flagrant intent to move these people out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak? But you've all been so patient sitting, I have to ask, is there anybody else who wants to be heard? Commissioners?
Again, I'm John Arrowood for Eco Media. We are extremely sympathetic to all of the complaints being alleged. I think some of them are a little exaggerated, but admittedly, there are concerts that go on here. But what we're requesting is not more concerts. It's to put a home that's on a tract larger than five acres of mobile home, which is permitted, and to grow agricultural products on the property. We don't want to limit it to pumpkins or a corn maze at this time because we may want to do something later in the future. But the plan right now is to do the corn maze and the pumpkin patch in connection with the Haunted Forest. There was one event, the Cannabis Fest last year, where 18,000 people showed up. That was not expected in any way. Most of the events here are 3,500 on average or less. Most of them are less. Last year, they had a total of five concerts. This year, they're gonna have three concerts. This isn't an, every weekend, there's concerts out there. This is three times a year, five times a year. There were some allegations about parking preventing emergency vehicles from coming in. That has never been the case. There's never been an issue with emergency personnel being able to enter the property or the area. We have tried to sit down with the neighbors. We were told to leave and the meeting was immediately ended without us able to. We weren't told to leave the meeting. We were told to leave the property. There are no technical objections to this request. The trailer house, it's not going to be on city water or septic. We're not gonna be taking advantage of any city services. The concerts, we do have walls up on the stage. The stage faces the opposite direction of the neighborhoods. We abide by the noise limits. We measure the noise decibels every 15 minutes when there is a concert, those five to three days out of the year. The stage was designed by an engineer and is permitted. There is no music in the mornings. I don't know where that's coming from, but it's not this property. Parking, there's a ton of parking on this property. We have parking on the river lease next door to the property. We can't prevent people from illegally parking on the street if they don't want to pay for parking or if they want to go park in someone's yard who's charging less money. We can't control that. There were some other traffic issues brought up today regarding buildings being built, but those are continuous traffic issues. These, the traffic issues here are maybe three, five times a year. And the Cannabis Fest was a one-time event that was way more, or there were way more people coming to that event than was expected. Again, we sympathize with the community and we are willing to listen, but being told just to leave, we can't really do anything with that. The stage has walls, sound walls. It's permitted. It's designed by an engineer. We have concerts three to five times a year. All we're asking for today is to be able to put a mobile home on there and to have agricultural purposes. We're not, we're already permitted for the concerts. And I understand it's a joint application again, but all we're asking for is to put a mobile home on.
I think we're clear about what you're asking for.
Okay. Well, we would request that it gets moved forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I think, I think we've heard it all. I think we've said it all. So I'll just reiterate. My basis for being in opposition to this application is their ability to have concerts, unfortunately, is not on trial here. It's not. I wish it were. I wish it were. It's not. But allowing the use to expand by letting somebody stay on property to coordinate, allowing uses that are gonna change the seasonality are gonna compound a problem. I can't support it for that reason in and of itself. Just gonna say how much I appreciate my friends in the audience for being here. I know it's not easy to do, and so I'm so grateful. Thank you for making all of those statements. Thank you for making your voice heard. That's how we can live in a strong community that we are proud of is when we stand up and demand it. I will reiterate once again that I understand the predicament that the applicants are in. I understand that they're in the business of making money and they want to have concerts. I understand that. I respect that. I think our, my friends in the audience, the neighbors of this, of Lost Lakes, understand that. But if you don't make a legitimate, genuine, sincere effort to mitigate the problems that you have created by you wanting a concert venue next to a neighborhood, then I can't support you trying to do anything else in good faith because you're not acting in good faith. So I've said my piece on that. Then, I move to recommend denial of item number 17.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to deny item number 17. Would you cast your votes, please? It is denied. And I want to thank those of you who've come down to speak to us today. As Commissioner Pennington indicated, we are well aware that it is not easy and that those benches are very, very hard. I really appreciate the time, the effort and the energy. And if I could impose, Dr. Flynn, on you just a little bit, I would very much like to contact you and talk to you about your experience in trying to do something about the specifically sound issues. This is a, this is, this is a unique situation here, but the question of code enforcement on sound issues is something I'm just interested in generally. And I would like to speak with you, if I may, about your experience. Thank you. Yes, that's right. Thank you. We have item number seven.
Again. Hello. Fallon Brooks, 1605 North Classen Boulevard.
We were hung up, were we not, on a relatively small issue?
Yeah, no, I, so JJ, JJ and I had kinda talked about, so I guess we're gonna, we're gonna take the technical evaluation off?
Yeah, we can amend the TE to say any improvements in the alley are subject to revocable permit.
I like that solution.
And we're, we're good with that.
Okay. All right. So then I would, I, I think that solves that problem. It was a long time to wait to make that.
Fallon, I thought you guys weren't joking when you said punishment. Like, that was, that was a long wait.
Fallon, I thought you were just here for the entertainment. I was wondering why you had stuck around because I missed your continuance. I was late.
So I will take a motion to approve item number seven.
I will make a motion to approve with the amended TE that any improvements in the alley are subject to a revocable permit.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item number seven with that change, the TE. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. We're good. So, we have, uh... Everything else has either been continued or withdrawn, is that right? We're down to the wire here. Additional items, communications, reports, planning commission committees. Planning commission members? I have to say, if ever there was a tie-in to our previous discussion today about the dangers of trying to limit, or trying to articulate every possible use and also the complexities of looking at PEDs and SPDs. When you try, you know, this, this, I remember this when it came to us, Lost Lakes. And it was all about, there's a lake and we're gonna do cable waterboarding. And, and that was genuinely what it started off to be. But that use unit, having been inserted without any limitation or, or further articulation, also permits, you know, this kind of use, which has clearly gotten way out of control. So, and, and that's a terrible problem. It really, really is. Planning department? Scared to speak up at this point. Development services, no. Municipal counselor? And citizens to be heard? I think Mr. Washington decided he had spoken enough for today. Other business adjournment? I'll take a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned.